Thank you and welcome again to this March 1st, 2021 Mesa City Council meeting. All of our council is present. At this council meeting, we are taking comments both over the telephone and the internet. You can find multiple ways to participate on the first page of the council agenda. Additionally, if you want to speak, you should submit a blue card one hour before the meeting. Again, you can find that information on the first page of the agenda and at masonaz.gov/bluecard. We will begin the meeting with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for the moment of silence and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item on our agenda is to take action on the consent agenda. We invite Mr. Kevin Christopher to please read the consent agenda.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. These are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Item 2, approval of minutes of previous meetings as written. Item 3A, act on one-year renewal with a one-year renewal option for the term contract for fire hose for the Mesa Fire and Medical Department. Item 3B, act on three-year term contract with two years renewal options for streetlight painting services for the Transportation Department. Item 3C, act on contract to purchase replacement stormwater sampling equipment for the Environmental Management and Sustainability Department. Item 4A, act on resolution extinguishing a portion of a 20-foot water line easement located at 8046 East Ray Road to allow for construction of a commercial warehouse building. This was requested by the property owner. Item 5A has been removed from the consent agenda. Item 6A, act on ordinance regarding ZON 20-00562. This is for property located south of Ray Road and east of Power Road. Modification of an existing planned area development and site plan review to allow for development of a hotel. Item 6B, act on ordinance regarding ZON 20-00491. This is for property located on the north side of the future State Route 24 freeway alignment between Ellsworth Road to approximately 1/4 mile east of the Crisman Road alignment. Major amendment to the Pacific Proving Grounds North Community Plan, also known as the Cadence Community Plan. Item 6C, act on ordinance regarding ZON 20-00609. Rezone a property located north of University Drive on the east side of Alma School Road to allow for a single residence use. Item 6D, act on ordinance regarding ZON 20-00769. This is for property located east of Hawes Road and north of Elliott Road. Rezone and site plan review to allow for industrial development. Item 6E, act on ordinance regarding ZON 20-00815. This is for property located south of Main Street on the west side of Dobson Road. Rezone and site plan review to allow for commercial development. Item 6F, act on ordinance regarding ZON 20-00861. This is for property located south of Elliott Road and north of Warner Road between Ellsworth and Signal Beat Road. A major amendment to the Eastmark Community Plan. Item 6G, act on ordinance regarding ANX 20-00665. Annexing property located north of University Drive and west of Ellsworth Road. This was initiated by the applicant. Item 7A, act on subdivision plot Metro Mesa Phase 3 for property generally located north of Baseline Road and east of Mesa Drive. Item 7B, act on subdivision plot Metro Mesa Phase 4 for property generally located north of Baseline Road and east of Mesa Drive. Item 7C, act on subdivision plot the annex at Cadence for property located east of Ellsworth Road and south of Ray Road. And item 7D, act on subdivision plot overlook at Forest Knoll for property located west of Gilbert Road and north of McKelb's Road. Mayor and council members, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. Mr. Christopher, Ms. Mickelson, did we have any blue cards for any items that were read on the consent agenda?
No request, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Council, is there a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Luna made the motion seconded by Mr. Thompson. We'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Spillsbury.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Verrettia.
Aye.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Duff.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Thank you. I vote aye as well, so that motion passes unanimously. The first item off of our consent agenda is item 5A. This is the introduction of an ordinance and setting March 15th of this year as the date for the public hearing on the ordinance. This is a zoning case involving the 1,200 to 1,400 blocks of West Bass Pro Drive on the south side and the 1,100 block of north Alma School Road on the west side. This is to allow for the development of a new office building and parking garage with an existing office development. Ms. Mickelson, are there any blue cards for this item?
Yes, Mayor, we have several speakers on this item. The first speaker is Ruth Ann Cho Walter, and she should be on the phone.
Ms. Cho Walter, please proceed, and I'll just say this at the outset for the rest of the speakers. When Ms. Mickelson reads your name, please unmute your device and speak, and you have three minutes to speak.
My name is Deborah Marrero.
We're not on that item yet. Is Ruth Ann Cho Walter on the phone?
Can you hear me?
Ms. Marrero, we're not on that item yet. If you would like to mute your phone, we'll be on that item in a little while.
Okay, I will. Thank you.
Ruth Ann, are you on the phone?
Why don't we proceed, and we'll see if Ruth Ann joins us later.
Okay, Ruth Ann should be there now. Ruth Ann Cho Walter, are you there? No? Okay. Let's go to Shawna Boyle.
Hello, can you hear me?
Who's speaking?
Yes.
Shawna Boyle.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Boyle. Please proceed. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Shawna Boyle, as you've just heard, and my address is 1328 West Mountain View Drive. I would like to request that you do not vote to add this item to the agenda for the March 15th City Council meeting. My neighbors and I have reason to believe that the waypoint 5 development, as currently proposed, would be in violation of a written agreement between the developer, the residents of our neighborhood, and the city. In the city of Mesa records, we have found the notes from a 2007 city meeting that promised the residents of our neighborhood that all of the buildings in the waypoint complex would not be any taller than two stories. The promise made in that 2007 meeting was not properly addressed in the Planning and Zoning Committee last week. A member of the Planning and Zoning Committee asked staff member Ryan McCann if our neighborhood had previously been promised anything in regards to limitations on the waypoint development. Mr. McCann's answer was no. I am not accusing Mr. McCann of intentionally lying. I am sure that he answered that question to the best of his knowledge. The citizens' time to comment in the meeting had already passed, so we did not have an opportunity to correct his answer. Had the Planning and Zoning Committee heard the answer that buildings no more than two stories tall had been promised in 2007, I believe that the approval with conditions and a vote of six to zero from the Planning and Zoning Board that you see before you on your agenda would have had a different result. The property owner for the development has changed hands since 2007. It would make sense that the original agreement could have gotten lost in the change of ownership. If you move forward with placing this item in the agenda for the March 15th City Council meeting, you would not know if you were voting on something that was in violation of a previous agreement or not. Please provide us with more time to investigate this further. Allow us to work with city staff to provide the mayor and each council member with the documentation that we have found for further review. Our neighborhood has tried diligently to keep up with this process and have documentation and ready in time, but we all have jobs and families outside of trying to protect our neighborhood from the effects of this development. We have also come to learn the hard way that many of these decisions are made through conversations outside of the meetings where the vote happens. We need more time to present our position. We have proposed what we feel to be a fair compromise that would both allow the development to be built, but also to maintain our property value and the dignity of our neighborhood. Please serve as the representatives of the citizens of Mesa that we have elected you to be. Please do not only favor a New York City developer who is not even your constituent. Please do not put this on the March 15th agenda.
Okay, the next speaker should be Philip Bramson.
Yes, I am here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Bramson. We hear you. Please proceed.
All right, thank you. Mayor Giles and council members, my name is Phil Bramson. My mother, Maureen Schultz, lives at 1242 West Mountain View. I concur with Shawna Boyle's comments. There's certainly no reason for me to reiterate or rehash those. There are some other concerns that I would like to raise, and this is in lieu somewhat of the approval of the buildings. I, along with my mother, along with the other neighbors, very much would like to see this office building not exceed two stories, and the parking garage, frankly, to be one over one. Having said that, there's been a lot of discussion and offering from the neighbors to try and mitigate some of the issues of great concern. Much of that revolves around the south-facing exposure of the parking garage. At the DRB meeting, there were a number of ideas thrown out, and there seemed to be some agreement by the DRB board members that there should be more articulation of the building on the south side, the much better screening of the openings in the building, a number of issues. So, you know, I think the neighbors have felt like there was going to be some direct response to that, but frankly, the only thing we've seen is a very brief slide that was thrown up during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting that showed a different type of screening on the south side of the building. So, it concerns me, and I question how council at this point in time, and not today, obviously, but could approve something that has been highly discussed and debated as to particularly the aesthetics of this parking garage and how the project transitions from office to residential. So, we think it's only fair, along with these timelines that we're asking for, that we see something from the developer that shows what exactly they're going to build. If there's been more discussion on that between the developer and staff, then we'd ask that those drawings and/or discussions be shared with the neighbors. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay, the next speaker is Janice Jakes. Janice, are you online?
My wife's in a meeting. This is Perry Jakes, her husband, but I think she had a card she wanted you to read. Is that not true?
Sure, no problem. You're correct. Just, her comments are, "The PNZ meeting for this agenda was just completed on 2/24. In addition, DRB meeting on 2/9 had concessions to be made that we, the neighbors, have not seen in writing yet. We, the residents of the Country Club Heights neighborhood, request that the proposed Waypoint 5 development not be approved to be placed on the agenda for the March 15th City Council meeting. In 2007, after due process for development approval and cooperation with the residents, it was agreed that the buildings in the Waypoint development would not be built higher than two stories. There is documentation from that meeting of the agreement that was made between the city, residents, and developer. In 2014, a minor modification was made that did not go through due process. There was no notification to the neighbors about this minor modification, and the modification resulted in an imposing three-story building. This three-story building has burdened the neighborhood for many reasons, including increased noise pollution and light pollution. The current proposal for the new portion of the development asks for a four-story parking garage and three-story building. The initial promises made to the residents in 2007 to have structures no taller than two stories tall need to be honored. We request that this item not be placed on the agenda for the March 15th meeting to allow more time to present the facts of this issue to the city council and to ensure that due process is being upheld." The next speaker is Ruth Ann Cho Walter, and she should be on the line. Ruth Ann Cho Walter, are you there? Hi.
Hi, I'm sorry I had trouble earlier unmuting. Go figure. My name's Ruth Ann Cho Walter. I'm at 1262 West Mountain View Drive. Thank you for giving our neighborhood an opportunity just to make comment on our vote tonight as to where to place case ZON 20-00538 for an upcoming agenda. I believe that Shawna covered everything when she spoke earlier, so I would just like to chime in again that, you know, this is not a frivolous ask for a delay to either your April 15th or more ideally your April 19th agenda, but it's a case where we feel that the history of the project and some of the actions by the city as it's developed over the years are a bit troubling and complex, and it's, we simply need more time to try to address a proper presentation to the city council and hopefully get a chance to get more information to council, if it's possible to have any one-on-one meetings with them so that they can understand why our opposition to this project is so strong. So, with that, I just would ask that you could delay putting on this agenda until one of your April meeting dates. We appreciate it, and we would make the best use of that time as possible to help inform you what's going on with this project and its impact to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joshua Boyle.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Boyle. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, yes, my name is Joshua Boyle. I reside at 107 North Sycamore in Mesa, Arizona. My wife and I are building at 1328 West Mountain View, which is the Country Club Heights neighborhood there, next to this planned proposal. I also echo my wife's, Shawna's sentiments that we are finding references to promises made in 2007, and we are trying to find additional documents on this. And for this reason, I am requesting that the proposed Waypoint 5 development not be placed on the agenda for the March 15th City Council meeting. I have emailed the city council members. I did hear back from our city council member, Mr. Councilmember Freeman, and he indicated in his email back to me that the city council, that if, excuse me, that if there was a promise between the developer and the neighborhood, that that would be something that would need to be resolved through court rather than the city council doing something about that. However, I would think that the city council would care about promises made by developers to neighbors and that that should be taken into consideration as well in deciding whether to approve a project. And thus, although we may have a legal course of action with the developers or the previous developers, I still believe that the information that we are attempting to find is still very pertinent to the city council's final decision on this. And for that reason, I would request, again, that this item not be heard on the March 15th City Council meeting. Thank you.
Okay, the next comment is from Anna Cho Walter, and she requested that her comments be read. She states, "We, the residents of the Country Club Heights neighborhood, request that the proposed Waypoint 5 development not be approved to be placed on the agenda for the March 15th City Council meeting. In 2007, after due process for development approval and cooperation with the residents, it was agreed that the buildings in the Waypoint development would not be built higher than two stories. There is documentation from that meeting of the agreement that was made between the city, residents, and developer. In 2014, a minor modification was made that did not go through due process. There was no notification to the neighbors about this minor modification, and the modification resulted in an imposing three-story building. This three-story building has burdened the neighborhood for many reasons, including increased noise pollution and light pollution. The initial promises made to the residents in 2007 to have structures no taller than two stories need to be honored. We request that this item not be placed on the agenda for the March 15th meeting to allow more time to present the facts of this issue to the city council and to ensure that due process is being upheld." Those are all the comments for this item, Mayor.
Hey, thank you. Council, do you wish to make any comments? Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna defer to our city attorney, Jim Smith. Jim, can you provide some input, and then I'll rely on our planning director, and then I'll make some comments. Could we do that first, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, I heard the comments. I don't know if there is a written agreement or not. Normally, if it involves the city, a written agreement would be in the form of a development agreement, so I'm not aware of any development agreement on this property regarding this particular issue. But it's possible that there's an agreement between the developer and the neighborhood, and if they would provide it. It might provide insight or maybe relevant information, but as you provided, the council's not a court of law, and so it's not enforcing private agreements. We never have, and so that's not the role of council. And so the role of council is to look at this, you know, project as a whole and its appropriateness, and that's also, that obviously that also goes to some of the comments on the appropriateness of height and sort of scope of the project. So, I'm not trying to diminish the neighbors and their comments regarding the nature of the project, but the fact that there may be promises between the developer and the neighborhood that is, you know, largely between them. But we're also open, if they find documentation that they want to provide to us, we'd be obviously very happy to look at it.
Thank you, Mayor. Could we then, Mr. Appiah, do you want to make any comments?
Mayor, council, I've also reviewed the documents from 2007, and I have not been able to find any written agreement. Beside the conditions of approval, that was approved as part of the case. I don't, I've not been able to identify any other additional information.
Nada, why don't you talk? Was there anything in the minutes that might have suggested that conversation?
So, yes, in the minutes, there were only two discussions about height. Two neighbors actually showed up and had reservations, or they did oppose the development because of the height. However, there was no agreement beyond just that discussion, and the Planning and Zoning Board voted to approve the project.
Mr. Mayor, this is Doug Ellsworth. I submitted a card to speak. I don't know if I'm able to speak tonight.
Ms. Mickelson, do we have a, I'm sorry, so your name is what?
Doug Ellsworth.
Doug Ellsworth? Ms. Mickelson, do we have a card from Mr. Ellsworth?
I did not receive a card from Mr. Ellsworth.
Somehow we got on the phone. So, Mr. Ellsworth, do you want to be heard on this zoning case?
If you'll permit me, Mayor.
Yeah, it's unusual. You have three minutes, Doug. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor, council. There is significant neighborhood opposition to this project. Most of the opposition is really to the scale and its transition, or lack thereof, to an adjacent residential neighborhood. Now, it does seem, having observed this in the last DRB and Planning and Zoning, that the wheels are pretty well greased for this application already, but I must tell the council and the mayor, the neighbors feel they have been run over in this process. Citizen participation has been minimal. It's been one-sided. The developer's attorney, you know, declined to even return a phone call to speak about the project. The objections of the neighborhood are legitimate. They're not simply asking for rights that they don't have. They're asking the city to follow their own site criteria about issues like compatibility to a neighboring, to a neighborhood, about scale, and about harmonious transition. I think all the neighbors are asking for today is that they be given more time to work with the city, to work with the developer, to try to mitigate the very significant potential problem that this development threatens them with. And we respectfully ask that, you know, there's no urgency here, that this should, that more time should be allowed for this process to unfold. This project was initially set up as a two-story office building project. Representations were made by the developer in the citizen participation report that the buildings would be no more than two stories. A third-story building was put there through an administrative site plan review with no comment from the neighbors. The neighbors simply believe that this is too much intensity, too close to the residential neighborhood, and all they want is to be heard on that issue.
Hey, thank you, Doug.
Mayor, with all due respect, this Doug Ellsworth, who does he represent? I don't know anything about him.
I'm sorry.
I'm gonna get your address. Do you live in the neighborhood?
I do not live in the neighborhood. I'm an attorney, and I represent some of the neighborhoods, some of the neighbors in the neighborhood, Country Club Heights. That was in my comment card. I don't know why people tap. I apologize for not noting that.
If the comment card, I think typically we, if it came in late, that's probably why it didn't, I'm not sure when you submitted it, but glad you were able to get your comment.
I had an email at 429 indicating that the new entry form had been submitted, so I thought I had an hour before the meeting.
Okay, yeah, you should have. I'm not sure what went wrong there. I'm glad we got you in.
Can I speak up for a second? This is Perry Jakes. I also put in a card to talk, but I don't see my name there.
We didn't receive a card from Mr. Perry Jakes either.
Yeah, I'm sorry, sir. We don't have your, we don't have you logged in. Do you, are, when did you submit your card?
Today, and I don't remember the exact time.
Okay.
So...
Perry, you have, go ahead. Give us your address, and you have three minutes.
Okay, I'm Perry Jakes. I live at 1318 West Mountain View Drive, and I just wanted to comment. I did all the people, like Shawna, Phil, Ruth Ann, I don't want to go over the same letter again, but we want to keep this off the agenda. I also want to bring up, I tried to bring this up in the last meeting, about how Waypoint wants to develop this and put so many parking spots out here, which is one of the egregious things, is the parking garages that we're really trying to talk about, plus the building only be at two stories. You know, I tried to bring this simple mass up. I probably got everybody bored trying to go through everything, but the simple fact is they're asking for 2,757 parking spots. Exist right now, 2,203. Let's assume that the footprint of the building will remove 200 of them. So, now they're really asking for only 754 more parking spots to make their 2,007, because they already have the other 2,000 existing. By putting a four-story parking garage up, that egregious building we're talking about, that means they want to add another 200, or excuse me, 1,245 spots, which is actually more than what they've asked for for a total. So, one of the reasons why we don't put it on the agenda is we want to get to the bottom of this, and why that is, really, if they're really going by what they want, they're only talking about, like Phil said, a two-story parking garage and a two-story building. These are the compromises that we're looking for as a neighborhood. We don't want this to go away. We want the city of Mesa to have what they need for Class A clients and everything else, but at what cost? So, that's why we ask not to put this on the agenda until we have more time to talk to everybody about it and bring our information forward and let us be heard. Thank you very much for the time.
Okay, thank you. I've gotten a text message as well indicating that the applicant's attorney is on the phone and would like to be heard. Before we do that, is there anyone else on the phone that submitted a card that would like to be heard? Okay, thank you. I believe Adam Baugh, the attorney for the applicant, is on the phone. Is that correct, sir? Is that correct, sir? We'll give you some time to unmute.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Adam, go ahead. You have three minutes.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it. I hope to just be more brief than that. You know, this is the introduction of the ordinance, the actual public hearing, if you are so inclined, will be March fifteenth, which I think is the right opportunity for us to lay out the land use side of the case and the facts associated, and why staff is recommending approval. I don't want to, I almost feel a little limited on my ability to kind of make a good rebuttal to some of the comments tonight without having the full form of a public hearing to display the exhibits in the background. So I'll limit my comments, really just to relate to the request today. I've scoured the meeting minutes. I've looked through all your public documents online from two thousand and four, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. I wasn't involved in the case back then, but I am not able to find any information regarding development agreements or stipulations that require or limit this to something less than what we are proposing. I do know that we have a site plan that's been approved, and the only way to change that site plan is for us to go through this very process, which is the site plan modification. I think we have been open and willing and receptive of working with the neighbors. We've had two neighbor meetings, Zoom, two more in person, and several phone calls since then. But short of me being able to present my public hearing case on the fifteenth, I can only say that we're not aware of any restrictions that we can find, nor the city, to what the neighbors allude to. And I hope that we can actually share the land use side of the case on the fifteenth and why this makes good sense, and why the city's economic development department supports it as well as the planning department. And for that, I'll be brief and end my comments there, and just want to let you know I'm here on the call and willing to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. I believe we have nobody else on the line that submitted a card to speak, so we'll conclude the comments section of this and proceed with council comments. I'm sorry, Mr. Freeman, you had the floor. Would you have any additional questions or comments you have?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, as I've looked at this issue and met with the homeowners, property owners, I get it. However, I do feel like it needs to be placed on the agenda for the fifteenth, and I want to, I don't know, everybody's gasping at that, but the reason is, is so that we can find out the documents, and I'm committed to that if there's, you need more time, then we'll do a continuance. And I sent you an email on that, because I felt it's important that your input as a neighborhood should be heard with the developer and yourselves. So, I'm going to ask my colleagues to support me on the introduction part, and they know how I stand come March fifteenth. If the neighborhood needs more time, I will support giving you more time. I have no problem with that. So I'll end with that, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Are there any additional comments, council? Is there a motion to proceed with setting March the fifteenth as the public hearing date? Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Freeman. Is there a second by Mr. Thompson? Thank you. We'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Freeman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Spillsbury?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Aradia?
Aye.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Duff?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Thank you. I vote aye as well, so that motion passes unanimously. And so for those in the neighborhood who are anxious to have this conversation and present evidence, we'll look forward to seeing you on two weeks from now, on March the fifteenth. And as Mr. Freeman indicated, if we feel this issue needs more time after that, we're happy to do that as well. The next item on our agenda for this meeting is item eight A. This item is a resolution approving a development agreement, a government property lease excise tax lease agreement, and an easement agreement for the development of approximately nine point seven acres of property generally located in downtown Mesa at the southeast corner of East Main Street and South Surine. That's the old Brown and Brown Chevrolet dealership, for those of you who are trying to picture that. This is for a commercial and residential development known as the Mesa Arts District Loft. We have already had a staff presentation on this exciting project at a prior study session, and that PowerPoint is available to the public at the agenda link if you missed that presentation. Ms. Mickelson, are there any blue cards on this item?
There's one card, Mayor. Tim Mello asked his comments to be read. He states, please be more specific to provide and substantiate what are the significant economic benefits that stated as being generated on this almost entire block that used to be occupied by Brown and Brown Chevrolet and Auto Nation. Have the hazardous and toxic materials left behind in the ground been either removed or remediated, or is this a brownfield site? In the light, in the light of the current market conditions and the economic recession where the path ahead is uncertain, why is the city manager proposing to grant G-Plat concessions to the developer? And please be more specific what group or individuals are involved with financing this project. That is the only comment card submitted for this item, and the applicant is also on the phone.
Hey, thank you. I wonder who would be best to address that? I mean, I know in our staff presentation on Thursday, we heard about the analysis that was done to justify the G-Plat with the economic development returns. And then there was some, a question of, Mr. Brady, who from staff would be best to address the economic development impact and whether or not there's any brownfield or environmental issues on the property?
Mr. McVay can come forward, Mayor, but, you know, I think that it's more than obvious that this vacant tract of land in the middle of downtown has been without generating any revenues for the city for years. So, a G-Plat is intended to help blighted areas, which this meets the definition in a downtown area. So, I think this meets all the requirements for that, and so bringing on additional development, which will eventually create property tax, also bringing residents to downtown who will spend money in downtown, generates additional sales tax revenue. So I think it's kind of obvious. I think there's some numbers that have been run by an economic analyst, but I think we're very comfortable that the G-Plat is justified and that this property qualifies for it.
Mayor, members of council, Jeff McVay, manager of Downtown Transformation, I'll just give a quick jump in here. We did hire, consistent with state statute, we did hire an independent third-party economic benefit analysis that was completed by Applied Economics. That's a firm that does, you know, a lot of these analyses. They're actually one of the most respected firms for doing these third-party economic benefits analysis. This project meets the requirements of the state statute, which is that it will increase the value of the property by over one hundred percent, as well as provide additional revenues to the local jurisdictions taxing authorities greater than those that would be abated. I'm going to hand over to Angelica Guevara with me. She has the actual numbers from that economic benefit analysis that will show the significant economic benefit to the city.
Thank you, Jeff. Mayor, council members, we did provide a copy of that economic benefit analysis attached to the council report, so that is available for the public on the city's website as well. But to give you a quick summary, the economic benefit analysis does indicate that the project will generate eight point eight million dollars in revenue to the city, county, school districts, and the state from sales and incomes taxes from two thousand and twenty-two through two thousand and thirty, which is the eight-year abatement period. In addition to that, that eight point eight million in revenue does exceed the five point one million estimated value of the property tax exemption and the lease excise tax exemption that the project would be benefiting from. In addition to that, if you want me to get into more detail about the numbers, I can do that. If not, that is just a brief overview.
Thank you. I think if that's attached to the report, that that ought to be, that's available to the public if they have additional scrutiny. But is, another issue that was raised was whether or not there's environmental remediation that needs to be done at the site. Is that something that is included in any of our reports?
Mayor and council, it is not the obligation of the city in this instance to actually determine the environmental hazards, or the existence or lack of existence of environmental hazards of the property. This is a private sale to a private developer. They are responsible for completing all the phase-one environmental studies that need to be completed. But I will say, through our development agreement, we have made it very clear that there is no obligation of the city through this process, that if they are, that they do discover any hazardous materials or anything like that, that is the complete obligation of the developer, and they will have to, as through their due diligence, in order to purchase the property, they do have to, through their due diligence, do a phase-one analysis. If that phase-one analysis shows any indication of underground storage tanks or other hazardous materials, they would then have to go on to a phase-two analysis, which would be actual exploration of the site. I do believe they actually did a phase-one and phase-two, and they are still purchasing the property. So that tells me that they are comfortable that there is not hazardous materials. I can say this is not a designated brownfield site.
Okay. Thank you very much. Council, I'm sorry, before that, Ms. Mickelson, are there any other blue cards on this item?
No, Mayor. No additional.
Thank you. Council, any comments on this agenda item? Council, is there a motion and a second to approve this item? I got a motion from Mr. Freeman and a second from Vice Mayor Duff. We'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Freeman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Spillsbury?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Aradia?
Aye.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Duff?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Thank you. I vote aye as well, so that motion passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is item nine A. This is to receive public comment and take action on the nondiscrimination ordinance that amends Title Six of the Mesa City Code by repealing Chapter fourteen and adding a new Chapter fourteen entitled "Nondiscrimination Code," prohibiting discrimination in public accommodation as employment and housing. Ms. Mickelson, I believe we have several people that have indicated they'd like to speak. Would you please introduce them? Why don't we begin with any that might be holding on the telephone?
Sure. The first speaker on this item is Kristiana Hammond, and she should be on the phone.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed. You have three minutes.
Okay, great. Thanks for allowing me the opportunity to share my support for this ordinance tonight. My name is Kristiana Hammond. I represent Equality Arizona. We are a nonprofit civil rights organization, working to ensure the equality of all Americans with a focus on the LGBTQ community. I'm also a citizen of Mesa. Last week, I spoke simply as a citizen and shared the importance that passing this ordinance has for me and my family. I love Mesa and especially love raising my children here. Our safety and concern, insecurity is a big concern for us, however, as it is for most Mesaites. But as a woman who happens to be transgender, our security is much less assured than it is for many others. Last week, I listened to all the other speakers who phoned in their support, and I thanked them for stepping up to do that. I also listened to the people who did not support this ordinance and admit that it was very difficult to do so at times, but appreciate the importance of hearing everyone out and having a complete dialogue about something as crucial to our city as who it stands for and why. The thing that stood out the most in those statements was that their concerns focused predominantly on transgender people, and more specifically, transgender women. There are several groups that this ordinance seeks to protect, and yet almost every statement in opposition brought up bathrooms and sports. Unfortunately, I know these arguments too well. I've watched them make their way into the public consciousness since they first were created in two thousand and fifteen. After marriage equality was passed that year, the organizations that made their living working to repress LGBTQ rights found that they could play on the general public's lack of experience with trans people by transposing the big bad wolf in grandma's clothing fable that everyone knows onto our population, one that very few people know much about at all. It is a myth that hasn't been, hasn't seen much legislative success, but has proven wildly successful for the organizations that fundraise off the theater that they created, one of which you'll hear from tonight. They make money by making people afraid of me. I will tell you who I am. I am the parent of a fourteen-year-old son and an eight-year-old daughter. I love to go to the park with them, get ice cream, go to the movies, ride our bikes around the neighborhood. I go to their recitals and their soccer games. I also work and pay taxes. Once in a while, I go out to lunch with my friends, or possibly once or twice a year, go have fun at a happy hour. That's my life. That's it. It's wonderful, and it's boring, just like a lot of other trans people that I know, which as an advocate for the community, happens to be many. I heard someone say that this ordinance is a solution in search of a problem. I'm happy for them that they can see it that way. If you've never seen someone's eyes glare at you from across a crowded restaurant after figuring out why your voice was a little different, or have never watched someone's smile turn cold after a simple hello, then you probably wouldn't understand what this problem is. If you've never been groped or manhandled by someone who felt that you owed them for not beating you up instead, then you don't know this problem. If you feel safe in most public places in Mesa, then you don't know this problem. For people like me, this is a real problem, and this ordinance is a real solution to it. I know it works because I've spent a lot of time in Phoenix and Tempe, and you've had an ordinance like this in place for years. I feel much safer when I'm there, because I know that they stand beside me as a human that's valued. I can't tell you how much it means to me to know that Mesa wants to stand beside me too. I want to thank you all for bringing this to a vote tonight and showing the people of Mesa and the state of Arizona that you value the LGBTQ community. This is very much appreciated. Thank you.
The next speaker is John Collins. He should be on the phone.
Hello. Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Sorry about that, I had to unmute. Dear Honorable Mayor and City Council Representatives, I am calling today as a priest in the Episcopal Diocese of Arizona, who previously served as deacon and assisting priest at Saint Mark's Episcopal Church in Mesa. I live at two four five one East Glen Cove Street in Mesa, Arizona, with my husband and partner, Quentin Gunn. I'm calling to voice my support for the nondiscrimination ordinance. When my parents bought their house in Mesa decades ago, the house in which I grew up, they did so with hope for a bright and prosperous future. This envisioned future did not exclude people from the community. In fact, as an ethnically mixed Anglo and Mexican-American couple, they cherish the pursuit of justice and equity espoused from the Civil Rights Act. That work continues today, and this council, in this city, can write another chapter on that journey. I am so happy and so thrilled and full of joy that the city of Mesa is considering this, and that there seems to be a groundswell of support, as the previous speaker said, to consider us as human beings and to love one another. No one should be fired, lose their livelihood, fear entering a store or restaurant, or be deprived of any of our commonly held rights and liberties because of the sex or gender of their partner, or because of their sex or gender identity. As a faith leader and a Mesa resident, who was blessed to serve as a deacon and assisting priest at an Episcopal church in Mesa, I believe that each person is created in God's image, and no one should face discrimination for being a member of the LGBTQ community. I've seen before that some comments were made that God does not make mistakes. If we truly believe that God does not make mistakes for those of us who come at this from a perspective of faith, then why can't we accept that God also creates LGBTQ people in God's own image? I encourage all of you, people of faith and people who do not identify with the faith, to support this nondiscrimination code here today on the principle of civil rights and of civil liberty. Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, honorable members of this council. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Thomas Barr. Thomas, are you on the phone?
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi there, my name is Thomas Barr. I am the vice president of business development at Local First Arizona, and our Mesa office is located at six five nine East Main Street, Mesa, Arizona, eight five two zero three. As the largest local business coalition in the country with over three thousand small business members and an organization representing over two hundred small businesses in the city of Mesa, I'd like to say that Local First Arizona proudly supports the passing of the nondiscrimination ordinance being considered by Mesa City Council today. Having worked closely alongside organizations advancing equality for all Arizonans, we have seen small businesses continue to advocate themselves for inclusive policies for the LGBTQ community that makes Arizona a place that we're all proud to call home. Continuing to grow a competitive and strong economy really does rely on ensuring our businesses are truly open and welcoming to all people, and our local businesses in Mesa are the makeup of what makes this city a great place. By passing this ordinance, Mesa will be setting the business community up for greater success. With LGBTQ buying power estimated at over nine hundred and seventy billion dollars nationally, Mesa's economy will continue to grow and thrive. If we wish to continue to provide opportunity for small businesses to attract top talent and provide inclusive environments to tourists and residents alike, now is the time for Mesa to have a nondiscriminating to have a nondiscrimination ordinance to match. As neighboring cities have passed similar ordinances, this is an opportunity for Mesa to rise in leadership and ensure that its residents and visitors feel truly welcome when visiting and supporting all businesses. We ask mayor and council to approve the nondiscrimination ordinance and contribute to advancing a better Arizona. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joshua Boyle.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. So, thank you, you've already heard from me. My name is Joshua Boyle. I was born in and I've spent most of my life in Mesa. Mesa is my home, and I don't intend to live anywhere else. I am a husband, a father of three young children, a conservative, a Republican, a Christian, and a member of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. I am also a Mesa business owner with my firm employing 20 people. I give you some of my background simply to provide context for my words today. I am strongly in favor of this ordinance. I'm a family law attorney of over 12 years, and this has given me a unique perspective in regularly seeing the unintended consequences that laws have on families and children. I've read this antidiscrimination ordinance numerous times, and I cannot see how it would in any way harm families or children. To the contrary, I believe that there are some Mesa families and children that will be protected by and benefited or benefit from this ordinance. I know there are some who say we don't need this ordinance because we don't have a problem or that this ordinance is a solution looking for a problem, but sadly, I think the angry attacks by some against this ordinance should be proof enough that there is, in fact, a great need for this ordinance. I've read the open letter expressing displeasure with the crafting of this ordinance and saying that we need to take more time to come up with something better. I know many of the people who signed this letter. They are good people, and I believe they have good intentions. However, in 1865, there were good people with good intentions who said it was too soon to pass the 13th Amendment to end slavery. In 1919, they said it was too soon to give women the right to vote with the 19th Amendment. In 1964, they said it was too soon to pass the Civil Rights Act. It is not too soon for this antidiscrimination ordinance. To the contrary, it is long overdue, and nothing done today would prevent those who think we need a better ordinance from bringing forward an improved ordinance in the future. Let's pass this ordinance now, and then, if necessary, let's make it better. And from a religious and moral perspective, I am in favor of this ordinance. I have read and loved the Bible. When I read about Jesus Christ in the New Testament, I read about someone who ministered to and loved those whose society rejected. And for far too long, we as a society in the United States and the world have rejected members of the LGBTQ plus community. We have rejected these people, these sons, daughters, sisters, brothers, and, yes, mothers and fathers. I believe if we are following the example of Jesus Christ, we should be embracing them, loving them, and welcoming them as fellow citizens and humans with the same unalienable rights and desires of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. So for legal, logical, historical, and moral and religious reasons, I believe this ordinance is necessary and will make Mesa even better. And I ask that all members of the city council, please vote yes on this antidiscrimination code. Thank you so much all for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tamara Stoss.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Awesome, thank you. Hi, my name is Tammy Stoss, and although I'm not a Mesa resident, I am a Mesa public schools teacher, and I work with many families in Mesa. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak in support of the proposed nondiscrimination ordinance. I'm a mother, a teacher, and a nonprofit leader in the community. I am the president of Arizona Trans Youth and Parent Organization. I work with over 250 families valleywide, many of them live right here in Mesa. These families are loving, supportive families who want nothing but the best for their children. They want their children to be protected from discrimination. They want their children to see themselves reflected in the community. By passing this ordinance, they have a future for their children where this is true. Simply put, protecting people from discrimination is about treating others the way we want to be treated. This ordinance is about equal treatment, not special treatment. The principles of nondiscrimination are rooted in the core American values of fairness, equality, and opportunity. All hardworking people, including those who are LGBTQ+, want to do their jobs and provide for their families. Nobody should have to live in fear that they can be legally fired, evicted from their homes, or kicked out of the store just for being who they are. In listening to the comments made by opponents of this ordinance, it brings to mind something I read the other day that rings very true. So many folks talk about how they're being forced to accept things that go against their beliefs. You're not being forced to accept them. If you have a problem with people of color, with gay marriage, with trans people, et cetera, then you're still welcome to feel however you want to feel about those people. You're just not allowed to make their lives harder because of your feelings. You're not allowed to turn their daily lives into a battleground. No one is forcing you to accept a single thing. You're just not being allowed to terrorize people. I also want to point out, freedom of religion is important, but let's be clear about what that means. You deserve to be protected from discrimination based on your religion. You do not deserve to be protected to discriminate against others based on your religion. It's a distinction that needs to be made clear in this case. LGBTQ rights plus rights are human rights. Trans rights are human rights. Critics of this nondiscrimination ordinance argue that passiveness could expose others to sexual voyeurism and assault in bathrooms or locker rooms, even though there is no evidence to support this claim. States that offer protection for LGBTQ plus individuals and municipalities such as Tempe and Phoenix, specifically trans individuals, have thoroughly refuted this talking point. If you look at the statistics, there's not a single reported instance of this kind of voyeurism occurring in states with legal protections for trans people. For example, 17 school districts around the country with protection for trans people, which collectively cover more than 600,000 students, had no problems with harassment in bathrooms or locker rooms after implementing their policies. While the issue is now being used primarily against trans people, historically, bathroom fears have been regularly employed against civil rights cases or causes, excuse me. It was used against black people to justify segregation, evoking fears that black men would attack white women in bathrooms, or now using it to fear trans people. This afternoon, I decided to look up just to find some evidence of trans women attacking.
Tammy, I'm sorry, we're running at four minutes now, and given the number of speakers we have, I apologize, but we are going to have to enforce some time limits. So, thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you. I thank you for your time, your consideration.
Thank you. Ms. Mickelson, please proceed.
Sure. The next speaker is Monica Phillips.
Good evening. My name is Monica Phillips. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of my family, who lives at 10729 East Defraction Avenue in Mesa. As parents of five children, including one transgender son and one gay daughter, as well as members of the LDS faith in our community here in Eastmark, my family wholeheartedly supports the city of Mesa establishing an antidiscrimination ordinance. We cannot allow ignorance and hate to be the motivating factors when determining policy. Every human being deserves to be treated with dignity and respect. At the last council meeting, people cited untruths and misconceptions to justify their fear-based reactions. They have allowed their fear and prejudice to dehumanize many who are marginalized. It is hurtful to hear terms like perversion, pedophile, and disgusting used to describe our LGBT friends and subsequently, our children, who are amazing, faithful individuals who just want to live and thrive in our community. Discrimination creates an atmosphere where my children have valid fears and concerns for their safety and their ability to live productive lives. We have to be brave enough to push past these fears and embrace all of our citizenry as equal members of our community. Rather than allowing misconceptions and prejudice veiled in piety to hold back our progression in society, my hope is that our city can be a beacon of fairness, opportunity, and inclusion for all, as well as preserve basic human rights. A pastor who is opposing this ordinance stated in his remarks at the last council meeting that God does not make mistakes. He is absolutely right. God doesn't make mistakes. It is our belief that God created each of us exactly as we are meant to be. We are here to learn and grow. He allows us experiences, struggles, and trials, as well as successes and joys. My LGBT kids came here exactly as He intended them to be. As a community, let's love better so that they can have a chance to become who they are supposed to be. By doing this, we might also find that we become who we are supposed to be. Thank you, Mayor Giles, and council members, for your desire to make Mesa an even better place to live, work, and attend school. I would like to echo my LDS faith's policy against prejudice and boldly proclaim that my family supports our city council in calling on all Mesa citizens and businesses to abandon attitudes and actions of prejudice toward any group or individual. By passing this ordinance, the city council will be leading out in promoting respect for all citizens. It is my family's hope that love and acceptance prevail over fear and hate in our community. Thank you so much for this opportunity to share my thoughts.
Thank you. The next speaker is Michael Soto.
Hello?
Hi, Michael.
Hello, my name is... Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you. My name's Michael Soto, and I'm the Executive Director of Equality Arizona. I grew up in Mesa, Arizona, and was born and raised. I love my hometown, and I wish I could have made a life there as an adult. For many, Mesa is a wonderful place to raise a family, to care for elders, and to experience the benefits of a large city that still feels like a close-knit community, but that's not so for many who are LGBTQ. I was raised in an LDS family, attended Mesa Public Schools through K-12, played school and community sports from softball to soccer, played in the orchestra and band, was active in Girl Scouts, Student Council, and academic decathlon. I was a good kid and a member of an active Mesa family. I was also afraid every single day, afraid because I knew from a young age that I was a member of the LGBTQ community. And in Mesa, that wasn't okay. I saw people mistreated in Mesa my entire life, from people whispering names and mean-spirited comments to witnessing violence, intimidation, harassment, and bullying of LGBTQ people. More than once, more than a dozen times even, the coaches and the parents of teammates in my summer and soccer softball leagues looked at me in the eye and told me to try harder, to wear makeup, to behave like a young woman, to get a boyfriend, so that I would grow up to be normal. My entire life, the message was clear: LGBTQ people are not welcome in Mesa. From an early age, I knew that I would have to leave Mesa, my home, to live an authentic life, to come out and live as a transgender man, the life I was meant to live. Last week, we... Last week, we heard the Center for Arizona Policy claim that this ordinance somehow infringes on personal faith. I know that fairness for LGBTQ people is not at odds with deeply held personal faith because my father, a devout member of the LDS Church, who passed away earlier this year, said to me, "You are exactly the person I raised you to be. You love our family, you live to be of service to others, and you stand up for what's right. You make this world a better place for everyone, and I'm proud you're my son and want you to know that God made you to be a man of faith." My father served his church with deep abiding love for the LDS Church, and he loved me for who I am. He saw as a grown adult and gained confidence from his love and acceptance that I wanted the same things he did, to live and work, to love my family, to serve my community, and to make this world a little better than I found it. He also witnessed the discrimination I faced in restaurants, on public transportation, at the movies, in airports, as I walked down the street at work in every aspect of my life, every day, and I can tell you, he would have supported this ordinance as a father and a man of faith. By voting yes on the proposed nondiscrimination ordinance, you will make Mesa the city where everyone can live without fear, where every Mesa resident is treated fairly and equally and has the same opportunity to thrive and contribute to the city of Mesa. As a now transgender man, I have known for many years that I cannot make a life for myself and my family in Mesa, but tonight, your vote will change that. By passing this nondiscrimination policy tonight, you will make it possible for me and thousands of other LGBTQ people to come home and be part of Mesa's vibrant future as a city where everyone knows they will be treated fairly, have the same opportunity to live, work, and raise families. Thank you for the time tonight.
Thank you. The next speaker is Robert Saik. Robert, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and city council members, my name is Reverend Bob Saik. I'm the pastor of the Episcopal Church of the Transfiguration, which is located in Mesa. I'm also a resident of Mesa. I appreciate this opportunity to speak in favor of the proposed nondiscrimination ordinance. It's my understanding that some people oppose this ordinance on religious grounds, and I'm sure that those people who do so are sincere in their beliefs and doing what they think is best. For my part, I think about the fact that, as one of the previous speakers mentioned, this isn't the first time that the religious community has faced issues of discrimination. Before the Civil War, some Christian denominations, including my own, supported slavery, and part of the argument was that slavery was mentioned in the Bible, but it wasn't specifically said that it was wrong. Later, as people dealt with, over many years, the long fight for voting rights for women, some said that women should not be allowed to vote because the Bible says at one point that women should be subservient to men. It's my opinion that this is another issue that we can deal with and resolve. I think that humanity has often struggled to accept people who are different. We struggle to overcome the feeling that someone who is different should be rejected. And I think that... I have a different view. I think that we should accept people who are different than we are. I believe that's consistent with the most important message that I find in the Bible, that we should love one another as we love ourselves. Now, I'm not an expert on all religions, but I believe that most faiths support the care of others and oppose hurting others. So I believe that religious communities have not been harmed when dealing with the issues of discrimination in the past. I think it's true that some religions have dealt with some uncomfortable things that they didn't want to do, but I believe, despite all of the discrimination changes that we've made, that religions are still able to believe as they wish to believe, and I don't think anything will change if we pass this ordinance. I think that each and every person in our great city should be able to earn an honest living without fear of being fired for who they are, for whom they love, acquire professional services and healthcare without fear of repercussions or fear of being denied a place to live in peace. I think equal rights means professing and practicing your faith freely and not stifling the freedom of others or imposing your beliefs on them. And so therefore, I ask for you to approve this ordinance, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Petra Morrison. Petra?
Hi. Thank you, Mayor and city council members. I'm Petra Morrison. I'm a native to Arizona. I'm an exercise physiologist and a public health advocate, and I'm calling in strong support of the proposed nondiscrimination ordinance that would protect all in Mesa from discrimination, including our LGBTQ plus grandparents, parents, siblings, spouses, and our children and our grandchildren. Ensuring that Mesa celebrates and respects and protects all people is not only the right thing to do, but it's also good for our community's health and all beings. Simply put, protecting people from discrimination is about treating others as we all deserve to be treated, with love and respect for one another. This ordinance is about equal treatment and not special treatment. Our environment is molded by policy, and that policy can foster environments that tell us it's safe and easy to go for a walk or ride our bikes, breathe the air, drink the water. Our policies can also foster an environment that tells us that we are protected, safe, cherished, and wanted. And these attitudes and these policies can create healthier communities, work environments, school settings, neighborly environments, and that also bleeds down into the family and neighborly relationships that we have. I urge you to take action today by supporting and securing this ordinance in Mesa, as Arizona is a hotbed of preemption. And in the current session alone, we have seen 27 explicitly preemptive bills and about a dozen of preempt- school settings, neighborly environments, and that also bleeds down into the family and neighborly relationships that we have. I urge you to take action today by supporting and securing this ordinance in Mesa, as Arizona is a hotbed of preemption. And in the current session alone, we have seen 27 explicitly preemptive bills and about a dozen, about a dozen of preemptive, like, bills submitted. One of those bills, SB 1325, would have preempted you from protecting the very citizens that this community, and the community that this ordinance could protect. And it's only a matter of time before the state attempts to interfere between you and, between you and your ability to serve those who elected you into your positions at city council through representation in this democratic process called voting. Thankfully, it's still within your power to make a difference and protect our elders, our youth, and ourselves from damaging policy and practices which impact our mental, emotional, social, and physical health outcomes. Hear our cause and hear our voice by protecting all of us with this nondiscrimination ordinance. The LGBTQ community of allies and children and families thanks you for your time and effort in this, in creating this ordinance and in creating this space to listen to us. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dale Krogan.
Mayor, council members, my name is Dale Krogan. I'm the president of the United Mesa Firefighters Local 2260. I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight in favor of this proposed nondiscrimination ordinance. As firefighters, it is our mission to serve and protect our community and all of Arizonans, regardless of race, religion, gender, sexual orientation, or gender identity. Fires, emergencies, don't discriminate, and nor do we. It is our duty, first and foremost, to care for the community, each other, and our families. Adopting a nondiscrimination ordinance would help to assure that all people are afforded the same protection under law, including some of the LBGT-plus first responders that I have so proudly worked alongside and whom I trust my life with. They deserve the same protection as I do, frankly, as all of us do. Nondiscrimination protections are nothing new. It's important to know that over 300 cities and towns across the United States have already passed successful implementation, successfully implemented and passed these kinds of protections, and there's been no increase in public safety incidents. In fact, the Police Foundation did a study of bathroom safety and nondiscrimination ordinance in 2017, and found that in cities with ordinance inclusive of LBGT+ people, that there were no increase in public restroom incident. Fact of the matter is, there is nothing in this proposed ordinance that would change that it is illegal to enter a restroom to harm, harass, or invade somebody's privacy. Any predators who try to enter a women's restroom, or a men's restroom for that matter, would be subject to arrest and prosecution. Everyone, including LBGT people, care about the safety and the privacy in these facilities. So when we talk about equal protection, we shouldn't let the facility become the scapegoat for inaction. Protecting people from discrimination is simple. It's about treating others how you want to be treated. When it comes to being able to earn a living, have a place to live, to be served by a business, to be treated by first responders, nobody should face discrimination simply because who they love or who they are, period. So I thank you for the time to talk tonight, and I hope that you will all vote yes tonight on the nondiscrimination ordinance in front of you. Thank you again.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carolyn Hubbard. Carolyn? Are you on the phone, Carolyn? You have to unmute your phone, Carolyn. Okay, how about Karen Gevert? Are you on the phone? Carolyn Hubbard or Karen Gevert? Are you on the phone? They should be there, but they're not muting their phone. How about Harold Matthews?
Hi, this is Karen Gevert.
Oh, thanks, Karen.
I'm here. Um, I'm just gonna go ahead and pass. Pretty much everything's been said, and I thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is Carolyn Hubbard or Harold Matthews on the phone?
Hello?
Hi.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, Carolyn, is that you on the phone?
Yes, I finally got through.
Okay, Carolyn, why don't you go ahead? You have three minutes.
Okay. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain and evil rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. I know this, we are so lucky here in the United States to have this right from God that nobody can take away from us. The people who are different, we should embrace and love and not make them feel bad or unwant worthy. But there is some problems. We have so many here that are listed, because we give minorities many times power, they misuse it. The Equality Act endangers women and children by recommending an individual's chosen gender, indeed, of his or her biological sex. His legislation would force more women and girls maybe to share locker rooms, showers, sleeping facilities. Biological males who choose to identify as females. Target started this. I talked to Alliance Defending Freedom, who are in the process of going to court over these men who come in that say they feel like they're women, and they, women cannot compete against them, even if they're taking hormones, because they have stronger muscles and a frame. This is not fair, and these girls have worked hard many years to be good athletes, and we've also worked for many years for women to be able to have their own, be able to compete against each other, and this is not right for them to do this to them. I asked Alliance Defending Freedom if there's been a problem with the restrooms. They said they're not, they're only gonna do one thing at a time. So we don't know. Now, the Equality, the Discrimination Act is similar to the Quality Act of HR 5 that was passed in the Federal House, but it's 500 pages. And anything that's 500 pages, I don't think is anything we should ever pass, no matter what it is. Yours is short and to the point, but it has so many different types of people that are, that we, for instance, when the Supreme Court gave marriage to gays and lesbians that never had been done before, what happened? Some were happy, others decided to use that power. And there were two bakeries that these people went to, and they got, and the people loved them, made birthday cakes for them, all kinds of things. But when they got married, they wanted them to do their cake, and they said, "We don't want this. This is against our religion." And they took them to court, and they lost their businesses because of all the expenses. Also, the flower lady who serviced them, but then they sued her. These parents, and also these children who have foria, foria, foria gender, the courts already have sided with transgender clinics against parents who refuse radical hormone therapies for their children. These children, when they're in, within a loving, nurturing family, like a lot of the people I've talked to today, as they get older, they find their gender usually the one they're born with. The legislation makes it harder for organizations and charities faith-based, especially with when they want to adopt. The Catholic adoption agencies-
I'm sorry, Carolyn, you're at four minutes now, and given the number of speakers we have, we have to impose a time limit, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your comments.
There's only one thing I think we do is education, not-
Okay, thank you. The next speaker is Harold Matthews.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay. My name is Harold Matthews, and I live in Gilbert, but I work in Mesa. On the Mesa City Council website, the mayor brags about his affiliation with Google, Amazon, and Apple. This is the answer to why Mayor Giles is pushing this oppressive, exclusive, discriminatory, anti-science, anti-biology, anti-family, anti-freedom, anti-sanity bill that promotes delusion. Amazon, Google, and Apple are leading the cancel culture charge to cancel people who have a different political opinion than Silicon Valley, or even have common sense. And as we have seen with their recent actions, those on the cancel culture hit list include anyone who believes that a nation should be stubborn, conservatives, Republicans, people of faith, whites, biological families, and anyone who wishes to maintain the Constitution based on the original intent, just to name a few. Now, do such cancel culture laws undermine our nation? Of course they do. Our enemies are laughing at us because these types of laws make us weaker, and so our enemies gain power over us. Do you think that Google, Apple, Amazon, and Silicon Valley have more interest in pleasing our enemies or doing what's best for our country? Now, here is the scariest part of all this. Once someone has been canceled by culture, it is a very short step to cancel them physically. Think about this. How does China cancel people? How do they cancel the Uighurs? Falun Daffo? Christians are dissenters of any stripe. How did Joseph Stalin cancel people? How did Hitler cancel people? There was a man outside trying to videotape this event tonight, and he was canceled on social media just for trying to get a different opinion. Is this ordinance an attempt at mass cancellation? Is this ordinance a dress rehearsal for mass genocide?
Okay, thank you. The next speaker is Viral Farnsworth. Mr. Farnsworth, are you there?
I am here. Thank you.
Sure. Please, go ahead.
Mayor and council. I've listened with great interest to what has been said thus far tonight, and I have a great deal of empathy for those who feel that this is, this ordinance would be the save-all, cure-all. I want to address my remarks more to the principle of government itself. Mr. Mayor, you state that you want everybody to know that our city is a welcoming and inclusive community. So in looking at this ordinance, it becomes obvious that you don't believe that Mesa is a welcoming and inclusive city, or this ordinance itself would not be necessary. Oh, but you did say, "We all take great pride in our city being a diverse, inclusive, and compassionate community." So that being said, why would an ordinance be necessary to help a city become welcoming and inclusive when the city has already achieved these lofty marks? I'm concerned from the standpoint that you cannot legislate morality. Morality comes from within the people themselves, and the best way for a people to be moral is for them to be good examples, to teach by encouragement, by reminder, but not force, and especially not force a penalty, especially when that penalty would come at the hands of those who are even less qualified to judge than the man who lives next door. I believe that without question, in spite of the fears that some have addressed tonight, that this ordinance will bring more trouble, false accusations, lives turned upside down, and it will not be welcomed where there is no problem to be solved. I think that the most important thing that we can do is that we need to trust our neighbors and the citizens that we live amongst. To talk about one other piece, I am concerned about this. It appeared in the paper, Mayor. To quote your friend and former council member Kavanaugh, "Giles may feel liberated by his last term in office to introduce this ordinance without fear of alienating some voters." Now, that perception bothers me deeply, because if Mesa does not need or is not reflected upon a discriminatory basis, and I don't know, and I've not even heard or read, not a single account of this type of discrimination taking place in Mesa, may have happened. I've not heard it. But I think that we are creating a problem that can be resolved through people themselves in accepting and loving their friends and neighbors as God has commanded us to live. I believe that Mesa is a city full of warm, sincere, genuine, hard-working individuals who know how to get along with each other and treat each other with love and respect. And I would hope that that would be the higher law, that this council would choose to adopt at this time by not passing this ordinance, which I think will have negative results. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Robert Jarvis.
Mayor and council members, thank you for this opportunity. I hope you received my written notes that went along with my submission, because I'm not going to go too much into that, but I wanted to address something that may not be addressed by others, and that is the construction of the ordinance itself. I'm gonna go fairly quickly because of time constraints. The first thing is, I'm looking as, I thought, you know, I better read the ordinance if I'm gonna be able to chime in on any of this, and so I did, but I ended up reading it. It took me about over two hours to do so because of the things that I found in there. The first thing, and some may be more important than others, but the first thing under the definitions, we have age. Age is actually defined as an action, which is incorrect. The age definition should be something to the effect, age is defined by the means or the protection of the class of 40 years or older. There was also a question why 40 years, and I imagine that's probably based upon studies from the past, because that age has been a protective class for, in history. The other thing is, the bona fide members, private membership club, you have supported by membership fees, dues, and assessments that probably should be an or rather than an and. Also, then on to discriminate and discrimination, the definition there actually contradicts the language in the unlawful practices, as it is more, and it includes genetic information and some others that are not included in the unlawful practices, and that should just be somewhere more concise. In addition, the under-employee whose activities are controlled and directed by the employer, I'm not sure if the ordinance is going to exempt an independent contractor, or independent contractor that works in hand with an employer would be at risk as well, which is a concern later on in the ordinance about, and I think it's in the general provisions, about aiding and abetting. That's 614-8B, which is kind of concerning and why that would even be in there and why it's connected in there. The other thing is gender identity. There may be some indications or ambiguities in relation to that application. Places of public, again, there are some, when you're talking about distinctly private, without a definition of what is distinctly private, that will or may invite litigation. You also then have, let's see, the definition of veteran status. It refers to the federal code. I looked at the federal code. It's only a one-sentence definition. Why that can't just be put into ordinance is kind of, should just have that one language in there. However, the problem with that is, is that the federal code has a definition of veteran, not veteran status, which are two different things. Therefore, it's unclear on what that actually means. Therefore, it's unclear on what that actually means. In addition, when you get to the unlawful practices, the language that is used in A, B, C, D, and E is different and the order is different. It's just kind of confusing on what that actually means, what is the, what order it should be. And again, this is just things that, this is something that would clear it up and make it more concise. In 614-3C1, it says, "A subsection shall not exclude or deny housing." It's unclear what that really means. In the exclusions, you have, use the language, "does not discriminate against any other protected group." That's in a couple places and it's like, why is it there? What's the explanation of that? How does that come into play? Because if they are exempted, what does that mean? So, it's unclear and confusing of what is actually exempted. And then in--
Sorry, Mr. Jarvis, we're at four minutes. So, thank you very much. As I indicated, we've got several speakers so we need to enforce some time limits.
Okay, the next speaker is Kathleen Nguyen.
Hi, this is Kathleen Nguyen.
Hi, go ahead.
I reside at 3803 East Blossmore Circle. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As someone who works with vulnerable populations in this community and across the county, I am painfully aware of the bias against our LGBTQ and transgender community. As someone who continues to fight sexual exploitation, sexual harassment, and sexual abuse, I believe the council is making a serious mistake by passing this ordinance this evening. LGBTQ and transgender disproportionately make up our homeless, our suicides, our sexual assault victims in our communities. This ordinance does not address the real problem and creates an additional one for biological girls. Forty-seven percent of our transgenders are sexually assaulted in the time span from K through 12. The sports aspect and the testosterone issues needs to be dealt with scientifically, not emotionally. The problem with biological boys sharing dressing and bathroom space creates a public safety issue. There will be those who exploit this ordinance change to gain access to girls. You are endangering an entire sex for a few. One only needs to see the anti-trafficking operation from last week where 35 men were arrested who were soliciting sex with children. Every single time we do an operation like this, every single time, men are given advance warnings, three to five times that they are buying sex with a child and yet they proceed. These law enforcement operations always produce these results. You are now creating legitimacy for those who want easier access, who may or may not be transgender, probably are not. This is a problem that this is not a solution to. I would hope you would reconsider what you are trying to solve and vote no on this ordinance. I believe it'll do more harm than good. I believe that we have to have a transformation in our culture. This isn't about nondiscrimination. This is about a shift like we had five years ago when we had victims of trafficking but we were calling them child prostitutes and we were calling them juvenile delinquents. We have shifted that. We need to do that with our LGBTQ and our transgender. This ordinance does nothing to shift the hearts and minds of the people in our community. And as a matter of fact, I think it'll have the exact opposite effect. I would ask you to reconsider this ordinance and do something different to help solve the problem you're really trying to solve, but this ordinance doesn't accomplish that. I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mike Phelan. Mike Phelan, are you there? You need to unmute your phone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak, Mayor and Council, about this important issue. First of all, I agree that unjust discrimination is wrong and I oppose it. All human beings are created by a loving God and deserving of love and the protection of law. Secondly, though, I believe that not all distinctions create unjust discriminations and that one of these is the fact that we are made male and female in the image of God. I'm well aware that within my own family and among people that I know, not everyone feels in that category, in one of those categories clearly and those people should not be unjustly discriminated against. But this ideology of confusing sexuality and gender has really created a tremendous amount of confusion for students, for young people, for basic patterns of life. I believe this ordinance is asking us as ground citizens of Mesa to be bad parents and coaches. As a coach who has coached girls and seeing that schools and athletic fields are among the places that will be distinction-free when it comes to gender, this seems to me to open girls and women's sports into great jeopardy. Over the last several years, the phenomenon of boys and men who have declared themselves to be female and subsequently entered athletic competition against girls and women have, due to their male pattern of growth prior to transition, then taken the chance of victory away from girls and women who have worked hard at their sport. This is a blatant injustice and it asks everyone involved to turn their heads and to lie about something very, very obvious to avoid hurting feelings. We do have to make strong distinctions at certain points and the distinction between male and female has serious consequences. I think that while the exemption for religious organizations and churches, while I'm sure it's appreciated by some of those organizations, fails to say why there should be an exemption. To seek to exempt religious organizations from an ordinance which calls itself something that improves Mesa as a community places those organizations which are exempted, which, and religious church organizations are constantly doing things to make Mesa a better city, it puts them in a light of being against improvement, against justice, against persons, which is false. If what is being accomplished here by this ordinance is true progress, why would we exempt anyone from it? I am afraid that this exemption is not something that will remain. And as a person of faith who loves all persons but considers the distinction between male and female to be one that's tremendously important and part of the clear image of God in human persons, I see that religious freedom is threatened down the road as well. And I would ask that Mesa, being a strong family, community, and protector of persons as a city, not pass this ordinance. I think we can do this in other ways as was suggested by several other speakers tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Nicholson, I'm going to interrupt you because I have a request from one of our council members to take a short break and I endorse that. So, we will and I appreciate the patience of those who are on the telephone and so we will do this very quickly if you don't mind. Let's take a five-minute break. I'm looking at my clock. It's 7:25. We will reconvene at 7:30 just to allow council to take a break and we'll be right back at 7:30. Please, everyone, stay on the phone and bear with us. Ms. Nicholson, why don't we go ahead and proceed with the hearing from the next speaker, please?
Okay. The next speaker is David Fishbeck. David Fishbeck, are you there? He should be there. David, your phone might be muted. David, are you there? Okay, how about Mark Hunsaker?
I'm here.
Is this Mark or David?
This is Mark.
Okay. Go ahead, Mark. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council members, for the opportunity to speak tonight. I certainly admire and respect you and everyone willing to serve in our communities. Thanks for all your efforts on our behalf. My name is Mark Hunsaker. I'm a 30-year resident of Mesa and a native Arizonan. I felt compelled last week to submit a card for the opportunity to speak but your plates seemed extremely full so I deferred for a chance to speak tonight. I also want to make it clear that I deeply support, respect, dignity, and equal opportunities for everyone. And as so, I don't want my comments to be misunderstood. It's not that I am in opposition to any nondiscrimination ordinance. I'm just opposed to this one as it is written. And just because I and others are opposed to this ordinance, it does not mean that we are pro-discrimination. I want to make sure that's clear. But tonight I would like to present to you three principles, three that I would call true principles as to why this ordinance needs to be opposed and not approved. Principle number one is that clarity is always better than vagueness and objectivity is always better than subjectivity. The language, as was mentioned by an earlier speaker, and I will say that some other speakers have covered some of the topics I intended to so the good news is that I'll try to shorten my comments a little bit. But the language in this proposed ordinance is vague and ambiguous. Its definitions are incomplete and subjective. Under several of the inclusions that are listed, references such as actual or perceived are used. And I noticed that perceived lends vagueness as to what and whose perception is being included on this and what is it that I'm supposed to be perceiving to have discriminated against. I wonder why there's a definition for sex but not a definition for gender. I also wonder why is there a definition for gender identity but there is not one for gender. One of the things that I don't feel allows this NDO to be approved is replacing an existing NDO or a fair housing act that we have with something that doesn't approve the ordinance through its language but actually makes it less clear. And as such, I believe that's a non-starter and it should be opposed for no other reason and we can't, it sets non-attainable or non-enforceable language. Principle number two is that all new ordinances or revisions to existing ordinances should be based on a need to be resolved, not just a whim or a desire to follow the crowd or a public disaster or feelings. Yes, policy based on feelings is typically bad policy and doesn't serve the community as it should. Having lived in Arizona almost my entire life, I know that it'd be a friendly and accepting community. I've seen in several publications, both put out by Mesa and the local news media, that having this NDO in place would send a signal for Mesa. Submitting that this is a signal does not mean to be sent. Addressing how we interact and love one another in our communities is a voluntary matter and of the heart and not one for an ordinance or a civil citation to be issued. And also submit that Mesa does not have a discrimination problem. If we did, then there would be evidence that supported this claim. I would submit that neither Mesa nor the other communities mentioned in the documents have published suffer from a problem that needs to be solved in this case. And the proof of this is contained in the statement I found in the presentation title highlights a proposed nondiscrimination ordinance where it states, "Other cities with similar ordinances have reported low volumes of complaints." If discrimination was an issue in Mesa or in these other communities, you would expect there to be a spike in complaints following the passing of the new nondiscrimination ordinance. Not that there would be few or little--
That's four minutes and as I indicated earlier, we just, I'm afraid, don't have the luxury of not enforcing any time limits tonight but thank you for your comments.
Okay, the next speaker is David Fishbeck. Mr. Fishbeck, are you on the line? Mr. Fishbeck, are you on the line? Mr. Fishbeck, are you on the line? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on. He's having some problems on his end. Mayor, I have 12 cards that individuals submitted in support of this item and another 39 that they submitted in opposition to this item. In the interest of time, I won't read their names, but we can include, we definitely will include their names in the record. And then I'll move on to...
They did not request that those comments be read, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Then there were a series of comments that were submitted. They requested that these comments be read. I'll proceed with those. The first comment is from Kathleen Noble, and she states, "Times have changed, and the change we are seeing should have happened sooner. As a retired science teacher, I am active as a part of my community, as a precinct committee person and a gun violence prevention educator. I applaud the Mesa City Council for proposing to act to assure that all our Mesa residents, in particular our LGBTQ residents, have treated fairly and have the rights that all of us deserve, pass this ordinance. It will be another step toward equality and justice in our neighborhoods and our businesses. I live in a 55-plus Gulf community, and we welcome LGBTQ residents. I know that other residents here would join me in supporting this step forward for Mesa." Chad Wolver Spoken Support states, "While I am a Phoenix resident, I have never understood why my rights to equal and fair treatment in housing, employment, and public accommodations change when I step into the boundaries of the city of Mesa. This update to your non-discrimination code is so simple to do, takes nothing away from any group, and affirms a commitment to a diverse, inclusive, and equal city. While I understand there is hesitation in regards to the trans community and bathrooms' shared space, the fact remains that study after study and years of hard data debunk these myths outright. They are just not true, valid, or legitimate. I hope for the sake of some of your most vulnerable city residents and people like myself who want to live, work, and be in an inclusive community, that you vote in favor of this update to the city of Mesa's non-discrimination code."
Sorry, Deanna, I'm going to interrupt you. I've received a message that there are some people, maybe one or two people, that are on the telephone. Can we double-check and see if we've left someone on the telephone?
Yes. Give me a moment. We do have a few speakers, but they dropped off. No, everything, anybody left are unidentified numbers. The numbers are not associated with any comment cards we've received.
Okay. I've received a message that Kathy Herrod from Center for Arizona Policy is on the line and would like to be heard. Is there any way we can open the line and allow her to do that?
We would need to know what her number is. There's a number...
Okay. The message I have is that she's said that she filled out a card.
It may...
I'll text you the number, and let's see if we can allow her to log on. Well, I'm sorry, I don't have her number. If someone wants to text that to me, I'll be happy to give it to Deanna.
If she's on the line, she can also unmute herself and start and begin speaking.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Herrod, if you're holding on the line, feel free to unmute yourself and go ahead. So Ms. Herrod, if you're on the line, go ahead and unmute yourself, and please go ahead and start speaking. All right, Deanna, why don't you start, continue reading the comments, and I'll send her a text and see if we can get her on the phone.
Sure. Mitchell Listwiff commented, "My daughter lives in Mesa, identifies as LGBTQ, and has never felt like she fits in with society and has felt judged her whole life. Protecting people from discrimination is about treating others as we want to be treated. This ordinance is about equal treatment, not special treatment. The principles of non-discrimination are rooted in core American values of fairness, equality, and opportunity. Approving this LGBTQ inclusive non-discrimination ordinance takes nothing away from anyone. It merely makes sure that LGBTQ people are protected from discrimination. Six Arizona municipalities have adopted non-discrimination language, including the city of Phoenix where I live. It is the right thing to do, and I hope that you will adopt this ordinance." Eric McDonald states, "No one likes to be treated unequally. This includes the LGBT members of our community. No one likes looking back in time and seeing them as treatment of others. It's demeaning, it's embarrassing, let's prevent this ugliness, let's help Mesa be on the right side of history." Liz McDonald states, "I am proud of Mesa as they make sure all those on the margins can feel like they're being treated equally." Ben Bridle states, "If this is the right thing to do, we can protect small businesses and minority community members at the same time." Ian Chamberlain states, "I support this ordinance because it embodies a civic and moral imperative for all citizens in the public square to commit to the equal treatment of all people in employment, housing, and public accommodations. This ordinance also preserves the right of people to live and abide by their religious convictions and will not require religious communities to solemnize or recognize relationships not in accord with their doctrine and practice. Far from providing special rights, this ordinance merely ensures that people in the city of Mesa are treated justly and equitably in their daily dealings. Furthermore, this ordinance will make the city of Mesa more inviting and welcoming and demonstrate its commitment to diversity and inclusion. This type of commitment is attractive to potential business investors in the city who often seek government partners' alignment with their own significant commitments to diversity and inclusion. Finally, these ordinances are not a partisan or political matter. Cities with both conservative and liberal administrations have passed ordinances like these to help to promote diversity and inclusion in their own cities and have reaped benefits from passing these ordinances, including increased numbers of people choosing to live in, businesses choosing to invest in, and create jobs in the community. I urge you to vote yes on this ordinance, and thank you for your consideration." Michael Martinez states, "Most of you know who I am either through my involvement in the community or through my 2016 legislative campaign. I have spent most of my life in Mesa. My family has been here since the 1940s. My mom was even the first baby born at Mesa General Hospital. I went to Whitman, Edison, Carson, and Westwood. This city means a lot to me because it made me who I am. I recently moved back to our city with my wife to start our family after spending 18 months living in Pennsylvania, and I was happy to see that Mesa is once again..." Do you want me to continue?
Yes, why don't you finish that statement, and we'll see if we've got someone on the line.
Contrary to what a recent open letter to the council states, and contrary to the statements you've likely already heard, this ordinance is not being rushed and has had a lot of time to be considered and worked on. In 2015, I was part of an effort that canvassed thousands of doors in Mesa, surveying registered voters from every political persuasion. The message we received was quite clear then, as it is quite clear now. Mesa voters believe that this ordinance should be passed. This is not a new issue, and anyone saying differently is merely attempting to stall the acceptance of an ordinance that has the approval of a majority of Masons. An ordinance simply seeking to extend fair treatment under the law to everyone living in our city. This is not a new discussion. It has been discussed at length. It has gone back and forth, and one thing is certain: the time to pass this ordinance is now. The great thing about our city has always been that we understood what matters, our ideas, not party or religious affiliation. If you come to the table with a good idea, we will come together to make it happen. This is one of those times. Mesa has an incredible opportunity to prove ourselves the leaders we are. I have faith that this council will do the right thing and take this opportunity to support this ordinance."
Okay, thank you, Deanna. Do we have a, we're trying to get a speaker on the line. Kathy, are you there?
This is Kathy Herd, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, Kathy, please go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Kathy Herd. I am an attorney and president of Center for Arizona Policy. Let me start by saying to those in support of the non-discrimination ordinance, at Center for Arizona Policy, we value and respect the human dignity of all people. Our concerns are not against any group of people. We also value, though, the reasonable expectation of privacy for girls and women and the constitutional rights of people to live and work according to their faith. I urge you tonight to delay your vote for a few weeks. Please give those in Mesa who were not at the table drafting this ordinance a chance to be heard. Those with concerns against the ordinance were not afforded the opportunity to suggest language changes prior to the ordinance being published. At least to my knowledge, we were not given that opportunity, I know for sure. In a number of the provisions, the language is vague and open to differing interpretations, interpretations that may not align with how some of you interpret the language. Giving the language time to be studied more thoroughly by attorneys who were not part of the discussions prior to the ordinance's introduction would serve your city well. I am confident that some tweaks in the language would give Mesa residents assurance that indeed women's and girls' privacy would be honored and respected, and speech and religious activities would be afforded their constitutional rights. While I appreciate the possibility, the suggestion of FAQs to clarify some of the language, I've heard of possible FAQs, those FAQs will not carry the weight of an ordinance that will be controlling law in Mesa. Further, while you will hear that the ordinance protects freedom of speech and religion, as well as girls' sports and privacy, the attorneys that have litigated these ordinances and issues throughout the country were sexually disagreed. We did not line up people to speak tonight against the ordinance. In the last three days, however, over 500 Mesa residents have signed a petition stating their opposition to the ordinance. Those signatures were gathered quickly, and we can get more if you would like to see more. I ask you to respect those opposed and give more time to consider the ordinance and meet their concerns. Thank you very much for listening to our concerns."
Thank you. Just one last call. Do we have anyone on the telephone line that may have been left there? All right, thank you, Ms. Nicholson. Please proceed with reading the written statements.
Okay. Malita Hillman states, "I moved to Mesa in 1973 when Mesa was a small town. Now in 2021, we are a large city, and we should join the 21st century and adopt this non-discrimination ordinance. Please don't be swayed by the hate and fear-mongering opposition to this ordinance. The experience of other cities with these ordinances has shown that the harm these fear-mongers claim doesn't come to pass. Make it clear that Mesa is an open and inviting city for all, and pass this ordinance." Deanna Villanueva Sacerro states, "As a lifelong Mesa resident, I once again urge you to pass the proposed non-discrimination ordinance. It has been unfortunate to see the divisiveness this issue has caused, along with a dismissive attitude toward those in our community who currently lack legal protection from discrimination. Mesa is home to LGBTQ+ individuals who deserve respect and acknowledgement. This misinformation surrounding the issue has also been alarming. Allegations that the issue has been brought in by outside interests are false. The NDO was originally discussed by our own City of Mesa Human Relations Advisory Board many years ago. Allegations that the process has been rushed are false. This issue has been discussed in Mesa and by Mesa residents for nearly a decade. One of Arizona's largest and most active LGBTQ advocacy organizations is supportive of this ordinance. Calls to slow down the discussion in order to include more voices, including LGBTQ+ only come across as an attempt to slow progress, particularly when coming from those who have never allied with this community or at little risk of facing discrimination themselves. Many of the comments at the last council meeting objecting to the ordinance referenced religious beliefs. Those using their own religious viewpoints to oppose the measures should be reminded that there are many religions, including those indigenous faiths, that have long recognized gender fluidity. Separation of church and state should be taken seriously, and public policy decisions should never be made through the lens of religion. As the 36th largest city in our nation, Mesa should be brave enough to welcome and protect all members of our diverse community. I respectfully urge your adoption of the proposed non-discrimination ordinance." The next one, Jody Corbett states, "I am the parent of a transgender young adult who lives in Chandler but is currently attending EBIT for the last semester of high school and is planning to attend EBIT and Mesa Community College jointly next year for her first year of college. She is currently looking for employment in Mesa near MCC and EBIT, and may eventually also be looking for housing in Mesa. I am very concerned as her parent that if this ordinance is not passed, she could be discriminated against in both employment and housing in the city of Mesa. My child is seeking education and employment to be a productive member of our community, and if this ordinance is not passed because fear and misunderstanding, rather than compassion and understanding, are allowed to dictate our policy, this could prevent her from reaching her educational and vocational goals. It is my understanding that this ordinance has been prepared, following great efforts by the mayor, city council, and community stakeholders, to find common ground for all of those in the community who are affected by these issues. Therefore, I urge the council to vote for the ordinance to prove fair housing and employment opportunities for LGBTQ individuals." Jamie Belcher states, "Living in Mesa, Arizona for over 10 years now with my husband Marvin, we live in Dobson Ranch, and we love Mesa. We both visited here due to the Chicago Cubs. We live near Wrigley Field and visited Mesa often because of the Chicago Cubs. We moved here to Mesa, Arizona in 2010. Many asked us if we were afraid to move to this area. We said no, and we felt Mesa was a vibrant community with many cultural aspects. We explained to our family and friends that we don't look for special treatment for being gay, we look for equal treatment. We felt that we would find that here. Both of us found jobs quickly here, one in healthcare and the other in hospitality, working for Fortune 100 companies that recognize equal rights for LGBTQ. America is stronger for equality and religious freedom. Businesses should not pick and choose who they serve and who they sell goods and services to. America is better than this. We have already gotten past separation laws. Changing the law will not stop hate and fairness or make our bathrooms unsafe. It will give a tool to all LGBTQ to be treated equally. Mesa will be stronger because of our commitments to equality and religious freedom. These principles guided how businesses operate for over half a century when the court first observed that religion is not an excuse for discrimination." Jay Smith states, "I believe that it's time the city of Mesa adopts an all-inclusive policy regardless of sexual orientation or gender. It is 2021, and to even have to discuss human rights for all is antiquated and racist. Please ensure that Mesa is on the right side of history." Rebecca Temp states, "I'm so glad to hear that Mesa is considering putting this law into place. It is high time we stop discriminating against the marginalized in our community. Adopting this non-discrimination code will make our city more appealing to outside companies, which could help our economy. It will show that we care about, protect, and take care of our citizens. As the owner of a business that has been in Mesa for 29 years, I am proud to call the city home, and I want it to be a place that all of our citizens know that they are safe from discrimination." Angela Huey states, "As president and co-founder of One Community, a member-based organization of businesses and organizations dedicated to diversity, equity, and inclusion for all Arizonans, thank you for your leadership tonight and your dedication to a Mesa that celebrates, respects, and protects all people. Simply put, protecting people from discrimination is about treating others as we want to be treated. All hardworking people, including those who are LGBTQ, want to do their jobs and provide for their families. Nobody should have to live in fear that they can be legally fired, evicted from their homes, or kicked out of a store just for being who they are. We know that the majority of people want to do the right thing and treat people fairly. For those times when good judgment breaks down, it's important to have protections in place for all people. In fact, 94% of Fortune 500 companies have non-discrimination policies that include sexual orientation and gender identity. If we wish to continue to attract and retain these companies, now is the time for Mesa to have a non-discrimination ordinance to match. It is not enough for these companies to have employment protections, they want their employees protected both in and out of the workplace. It's reassuring to know that non-discrimination ordinance..." to know that nondiscrimination ordinances aren't a partisan issue. A 2018 poll by O'H Predictive Insights showed that likely voters favored nondiscrimination protections in employment, housing, and public services at over 70%, and self-identified likely conservative voters favored those protections at well over 50%. Most importantly, all of us care about safety and privacy. Contrary to false arguments by the opposition, nothing about this ordinance changes the fact that it is illegal to enter a restroom or facility to harm or harass people or invade their privacy. Any predator who tries to enter a woman's facility would be subject to arrest and prosecution, just as they are today. It's important to know that over 300 cities across the US have already implemented these types of ordinances with no increase in public safety incidents. If we want to live in a place that remains competitive, attracts the very best talent, has a strong economy, and is a vibrant place to live, then we must also be open for business to everyone. Thank you to the mayor and council for studying this issue carefully and working with a broader way of stakeholders across our city over many years to draft an ordinance that is fair to everyone in Mesa." Chris Camacho states, "As president and CEO of GPEC, I fully support the proposed nondiscrimination ordinance, which will ensure equal access and treatment to Mesa's diverse populations for goods, services, employment, and housing. The proposed ordinance addresses discriminatory practices that impede the social and economic progress of the city of Mesa and will lead to a vibrant and thriving community moving forward." Nathaniel Rotan states, "One in 10 is a nonprofit providing services and support to LGBTQ youth and young adults, ages 11 to 24, and has operated a satellite location in Mesa for the last 10 years. The youth we serve experience higher rates of depression and suicide. Our vision at One in 10 is a world where all LGBTQ youth and young adults are embraced for who they are, actively engaged in their communities, and empowered to lead. By passing this amendment, Mesa is sending a message of inclusion to all of its citizens, letting them know they have the freedom to work hard, access basic services, and take care of themselves and their loved ones without fear of discrimination. Thank you for considering this update to make Mesa the best city for our young people." Keisha McKinner states, "On behalf of the Arizona region of ADL, we are writing in strong support of the proposed nondiscrimination ordinance that would protect all in Mesa from discrimination, including members of the LGBTQ community. Founded in 1913 in response to an escalating climate of antisemitism and bigotry, ADL is widely recognized as a leading anti-hate organization. Today, we continue to fight all forms of antisemitism and bigotry as we seek to create a more just and inclusive society. Our ultimate goal is a world in which no group or individual suffers from bias, discrimination, or hate. Ensuring a Mesa that celebrates, respects, and protects all people is not only the right thing to do, but is also good for the business of Mesa and in line with our mission of securing fair and just treatment for all. Simply put, protecting people from discrimination is about treating others as we want to be treated. This ordinance is about equal treatment, not special treatment. The principles of nondiscrimination are rooted in core American values of fairness, equality, and opportunity. All hardworking people, including those who are LGBTQ, want to do their jobs and provide for their families. Nobody should have to live in fear that they can be legally fired, evicted from their homes, or kicked out of a store just for being who they are. Unfortunately, without this ordinance, people and families can be denied housing or refused service at a business simply for being gay or transgender in Mesa. That's not only wrong, but it's also bad for the economic sustainability of Arizona. We can't afford to have barriers in place when it comes to attracting and retaining the top talent and business we need to succeed. Our regional competitors already have these protections in place, giving them a distinct advantage in recruitment and attraction. It's reassuring to know that nondiscrimination ordinances aren't a partisan issue. Thank you to the mayor and council for studying this issue carefully." Christina Estal states, "I believe supporting this measure is a step forward for the city of Mesa and becoming the vibrant, forward-thinking city I know it can become and is becoming. The city needs to show it will be an inclusive, accepting city. Mesa has for too long been known as a city of unacceptance. It's time to change that. If the city wants to grow and be a vibrant hub and attract more industries and businesses, this ordinance needs to pass. Religion should not be a factor in this passing or not." And then I'll move to the opposition comments. Karen Nichol states, "Please vote no on the unfair, unwise nondiscrimination law. I do not want men, boys dressed as females using female restrooms, dressing rooms, etc. I do not want females to have to compete in sports against males dressed as females." Joseph Hatch states, "Julie Spilsbury from District 2, we live in the USA and have a republic, not a democracy. I urge you to vote against this ordinance because it is not representative of your constituents. Please put this to a vote publicly, and you will find that the majority do not represent moving ahead with this change in our community." Todd Wolfred states, "I oppose this ordinance because it has a great threat and risk of harm to women and children, but also to men, who would not feel comfortable and safe with someone of the opposite gender being allowed and encouraged to enter into the same bathroom or locker room with them. I understand people not wanting to be discriminated against, and I wish we could accommodate everyone in that desire, but there is no legislation possible that could accommodate everyone. If this passes, the discrimination will simply pass from the minority to the majority. Also, we already have anti-discrimination laws in Mesa. We do not need even more legislation to hinder religious freedoms and private businesses. This proposed ordinance is dangerous and divisive for the city of Mesa." Melissa Fuller states, "I do not want this discrimination ordinance passed. I do not want transgender men using the women's bathrooms." S. McNeil states, "This discrimination ordinance is something that flies in the face of almost every citizen of Mesa. From what has been discussed on social media and from watching last week's study session, there is not the desire nor the demand to have something like this pass. With the comment of 99% of cities or towns within this country without this type of ordinance, there is no reason to put something in place that puts a large portion of our community and our population at risk of harm. My daughter was assaulted in a bathroom. This is not something that comes lightly to me, nor is it something that I think others take lightly. Men do not belong in a woman's bathroom, in a women's locker room, in the women's shower, no matter what. I have a gay brother, and I do not claim to know what the LGBTQ community feels on every aspect, but I do know how the community, which is the majority of people in Mesa, feel about this ordinance trying to be passed by members on the committee who, when we voted them in, thought that they had the same kind of ideals as we did. Julie Spilsbury, apparently, we were wrong. But you all were put in your chairs because of us. This is not your choice to make, but the choice of your constituents. So listen to your constituents." Dean Taylor states, "This is not what I elected my city council to do. The protection of our wives and children are much more important. Also, my daughters and granddaughters should not have to compete against boys in sports." Jacob Herbst states, "Gender identity is too broadly defined in this code and must not go beyond the biological gender of an individual. This goes against protecting our citizens and opens them up potentially to potentially dangerous and compromising situations." Doreen Stradling states, "I am writing in opposition to the proposed nondiscrimination ordinance. I favor equal rights and freedoms for all people regardless of race, color, ethnicity, national origin, age, disability, religion, sex, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, veteran status, marital status, genetic information, or familial status. What I do not favor is bullet point four of the ordinance, which allows men who identify as women allowed in our public restrooms and gym dressing rooms. I am sickened to think that men who identify as women would be in the same dressing room with me at the gym or in a public restroom with me or my daughters or young granddaughters. I have read the argument of the mayor in which he feels we are all entitled to the same rights and protections and that we should all be treated equally and morally. There is nothing moral or equitable about me being forced to share a locker room with a man who identifies as a woman. I am frightened for my young granddaughters and their rights to be able to go into a public restroom without fear of a man who feels like a woman in there with them. Where are our rights? We will be discriminated against in the name of nondiscrimination. I understand that he thinks it is good for the economy. He thinks companies like Apple and Boeing will want to come do business in Mesa. They already do business in Mesa, and I am not willing to give up my freedom and morals for the sakes of tax revenue. There are principles more important than money. I, and I would hope you would too, for God more than man, and value morals over money and tax revenue. We are in a battle for our freedom. I urge you to do what is morally right for me as a woman and for my daughters and granddaughters." Lester Stradling states, "I oppose the proposed nondiscrimination ordinance because I fear it would result in discrimination against girls and women. I am sympathetic to those who suffer under the confusion of gender identity, but I do not feel it is right to marginalize women and girls in public restrooms and locker facilities. A sexual predator can be granted legal rights to enter by claiming that they identify as a woman. I can appreciate the pressure that our city officials might feel, but pressure does not change the content of what is right and just. Apple and Boeing are already doing business in Mesa because they chose to do business here. We should not allow our values to be sold to satisfy their corporate agenda." Carrie in Adams state, "The proposed ordinance was drafted by city attorneys with extremely limited input from key members of the community. Few of the statewide or city faith leaders were part of the discussions. Many private citizens were totally unaware of the proposed changes. Many of those that did hear about the ordinance change heard only days or hours before the final draft was approved by the council. This has led to an ordinance that does not balance a city's important perspectives fairly or adequately. If we genuinely want the change in inclusion of all Mesa residents, we need to craft an ordinance that considers all their voices, not just city bureaucrats. Based on the concerns we have with the current version of this ordinance, we call on the city council to allow time for people with different perspectives to come to the table and craft a modified ordinance." Scott Overstreet states, "I am opposed to this proposed ordinance, which does not indicate that I agree with discrimination. Discrimination against any person is wrong. Prior to the council's vote tonight, would you please answer the following questions? I have asked these questions to each member of the council and email and did not receive a response. As citizens of Mesa, we need to know the why behind proposed ordinances such as this one. What problems have caused the need for the ordinance? What data and studies have shown the need? Who is this ordinance designed to protect? How will the ordinance protect them? How will the ordinance protect all citizens? If the ordinance is passed, will you then adopt an ordinance to protect those who are now at risk of not being protected? Which companies and corporations have stated they will come to Mesa if this ordinance is passed?" Neil Maxwell, a well-known religious leader, said, quote, "A society which permits anything will eventually lose everything," end quote. This proposed ordinance appears to be permitting everything. Don't take the citizen of Mesa down the path of losing everything. I urge you to vote no. Judeen Brown states, "Could the funding that Mesa would receive by passing this ordinance be used to install a third gender public bathroom? I believe that passing this ordinance would discriminate against Mesa citizens who believe that public bathroom use should be by gender division according to the body parts you were born with. If someone uses a bathroom and you are not sure of their gender, but they state to themselves, no problem. I've spoken to friends, members of LGBT, who are fine going to the bathroom of the gender they were born with. If this passes, there will be those who will take advantage of this ordinance and cause problems. They will have this ordinance to back up why they were even in that bathroom. I will feel discriminated against because of those people." Erin Brewer states, "Though this ordinance might be motivated by good intentions, it is imperative for you to understand that including gender identity as a protected category takes away protections for girls, women, and the LGBT community. To insist that a biological male be accepted as a woman just because he claims to identify as one means that any male can violate sex-based spaces, excuse me. These sex-based spaces were originally established to protect vulnerable women. Sex-based rights and protections were established because of harassment, discrimination, and violence faced by women based on their biology, not their identity. It is important to note that these protections are necessary because girls and women cannot identify out of their oppression. Girls and women are vulnerable when men are allowed to violate sex-segregated spaces such as bathrooms, homeless shelters, prisons, and bathrooms. There are numerous examples of how girls and women have suffered violence as a result of men who claim to identify as women. Lesbians are at an increased risk of violence if men who claim to identify as lesbians are allowed to impersonate women in lesbian spaces and dating apps. When identity becomes the basis for protections, anyone can opt into protections, thus eliminating the intent of the protections. In addition, a policy that suggests that religions, traditions, values, or belief systems are promoting violence and discrimination if they do not accept the concept of gender identity infringes on religious rights as well as personal rights of others. Gender identity is as much of a religious and personal belief as any other belief system that is not empirically based. Allowing men to identify into the category of woman actually undermines the ability of girls, women, and the LGBT community to enjoy their human rights because they lose all sex-based or sexual orientation-based rights and protections. It is imperative that the category of girls and women as being female, of lesbian as a female who is attracted to other females, and of gay as a male attracted to other males be respected. These categories must be upheld if the rights and protections of girls, women, and the LGBT community are to be maintained." Ray Speckman states, "I am very concerned about the wording of this ordinance. I would like the city council to remove this from the consent agenda, then take more time to review the ordinance and the ramifications that it would have on families, schools, small businesses, churches, and our right to free speech and religion. The city of Mesa is already a very inclusive community where people of all groups are able to find employment, housing, and the widely accepted Mesa businesses and organizations. I see this ordinance forcing families who are genuinely concerned for the safety of their children to start homeschooling and restricting activities in public that would put their children at risk. It could also significantly impact the safety of women in sports, shelters, and other public arenas. I have seven children and 27 grandchildren, all that live in the city of Mesa, and this will dramatically change that each of them live and work in Mesa and not for the better. So please step back, entertain feedback, and reconsider implementing this ordinance." Heather Austin states, "Thank you for working to protect Mesa's citizens. I appreciate those involved have been working on this since 2014. However, the specific language of the legislation has only recently been finalized. Please don't rush this legislation through until you've taken more time with those outside your normal echo chambers of East Valley Partnership City Committees to better understand the implications on a variety of Mesa's small businesses and housing industry. Also, Flagstaff, Phoenix, and Tucson are not small business-friendly and shouldn't be Mesa's models for effective legislation." Rebecca Squire states, "If males are females and females are males, and there is not a distinguished difference, or that difference can be changed and manipulated, then why do we have divided female and male bathrooms at all? All bathrooms need to remain single use, both male, female, transgender, or other. If there is a need for multiple-use bathroom, then each division ought to have a distinguished place." Lori Noble states, "I am against this nondiscrimination ordinance the way it is written right now. I think you need more time to discuss this and any consequences that could arise because of it." Tara Rowland states, "As a lifelong citizen of Mesa, I urge you to vote no on the nondiscrimination ordinance. We have laws in place already to protect our citizens from unlawful discrimination. This ordinance's intent is to signal some sort of harmoniousness, inclusivity, and sounds all warm and good, but in reality will usurp the rights of all citizens for the benefit of a small fringe minority. It will undoubtedly bring about discord, increase discrimination, and expose small businesses, the city, and its citizens to lawsuits and potentially lascivious crime. There has to be a better way to reach out to the fringe beyond trampling the rights of everyone." Kay Hunsaker states, "The ambiguity of the terminology in this NDO exposes businesses, citizens, and neighbors to unfair claims and lawsuits. It sends an unachievable standard. Everyone deserves dignity, respect, and fairness. The newly worded NDO does just the opposite. This is a bad policy for Mesa. I hope it does not pass." Ian Bennett states, "The ordinance is unconstitutional and unnecessary." Jennifer Clarkson states, "I oppose the amendment to 9A to include the verbiage prohibiting discrimination in public accommodations as it will endanger our citizens and open the door for child predators, pedophiles, and others who will take advantage of the innocent in public restrooms, locker rooms, and dressing rooms on city property, including schools. Please protect the young and innocent." Tony Orton states, "The proposed nondiscrimination ordinance would infringe upon the rights of the citizens of Mesa from females to private business owners. Please allow due process through the court system instead of creating laws that make a special class of citizens while denying others." Kate Bangston states, "Please vote no on this item. This item is not about inclusion, it is about creating chaos and starting Mesa on the road to progressive hell, just like San Francisco, Portland, Seattle, Los Angeles, and so many other cities that used to be nice places to live. Supporters of this item have been telling you that it will increase tourism and encourage new businesses to move into Mesa. Nothing could be further from the truth. Cities like Seattle, Portland, San Francisco, etc. are losing their tourism industry. People no longer feel welcome or safe in progressive cities. This ordinance would destroy the business and community in Mesa. It would initially be used to punish business owners who don't bow to the woke culture. Eventually, Mesa will become like other progressive cities where business owners and residents are leaving for less repressive, less woke cities where residents can raise their children- where residents can raise their children and live their lives according to traditional American values. Twenty years ago, my family moved from Seattle to Phoenix to escape the destruction of progressive policies. We recently moved to Mesa because we could see Phoenix is becoming less welcoming to people who hold traditional values. Please don't ruin Mesa by approving this ordinance. Look at the cities that have enacted similar ordinances. It never turns out well. Jay Moore states, I have read the proposed ordinance and laws of this type have been popping up across the country. There is sufficient evidence that problems associated with laws that attempt to protect gender identity are impossible to constrain on the side of misuse or abuse. The situations of physical men by sex who gender identify as women entering women's restrooms, women battered, women's battered shelters, et cetera, are of serious concern for the protection of girls and women. The exclusion section of the ordinance does not prevent this from happening. Section three, for example, should not have a qualifier to the exclusion of public restrooms. While the ordinance encompassing gender identity may be well-intended, it is impossible to control abuse by men who seek to misuse its protection as predators of women. The city would have no way of policing such behavior until after a woman or girl has already been victimized. This is unacceptable. Please do not approve this ordinance. Richard Adams Jr. states, I am a proponent of equality, fairness, and non-discrimination. However, I do not support the proposed NDO you're considering today. I object to the inclusion of gender identity language. In my opinion, the notion of self-determined gender identity is contrary to medical science, has no basis in fact or logic, and is Orwellian doublespeak, AKA false truth. To adopt such a notion into law sets at best ill-advised precedent. I regret that the NDO before you contains this language. I would support an ordinance that did not contain these references. I make these comments as a private citizen with no representation of any board or organization intended. Bonnie Solheim states, the city of Mesa does not need nor want the non-discrimination ordinance. In fact, enacting it becomes another overreach of local government. It constitutes an attempt by a well-meaning city council to impose unnecessary regulations upon the people. Unfortunately, it is a representation of too many laws and not enough common sense. I live just outside the boundaries of the city of Mesa, but I'm in Mesa all the time. Stop this nonsense. Todd Wilson states, Mayor Giles, Mayor Duffin, members of the council, thank you. I have emailed all members of this council my thoughts on non-discrimination codes generally that when they include the category gender and gender identity and to a lesser extent sexual orientation, that the practical outcome of such law is to force public acquiescence to modern racial definition, radical definitions of sex and human nature, specifically that biological sex is irrelevant and that gender is self-determined. Many jurisdictions, NDCs, apply so broadly that they are mostly a tax on the free expression of the majority of citizens who believe in traditional values and scientific definitions of male and female. After studying the text of the ordinance currently considered by the council, I see that Mesa is at least attempting to face this reality by carving out important exemptions. So many exemptions, however, that even after several readings, I struggle to decipher what kind of discrimination we intend for the code to prohibit. Therefore, I'd like to ask about several specific situation examples. Would the NDC compel a Muslim videographer to attend a film, a same-sex wedding? Would the NDC compel Mesa Public Schools to allow a student who competed on the boys' track team to compete on the girls' team? Would the NDC compel a business to build gender-neutral bathrooms using their own funds? Would the NDC compel a doctor or medical practice to provide sex reassignment surgery or hormone treatments to a minor with or without parental permission? Would the NDC forbid a rehab facility from assigning only biological females to care for female patients at the patient's request? If the answer to any of the above is yes, then the NDC goes too far. And at that point, given the numerous exemptions, it would probably be best to rewrite the entire ordinance focusing only on the specific areas of public life where it does apply. I've heard proponents declare that an NDC proclaims Mesa's devotion to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and that by passing it, LGBTQ people will finally be accepted. But that's not what laws do. There is no law that will force the majority of people in Mesa or elsewhere to accept radical claims about sex, human nature, or our most fundamental social institutions. You cannot compel thought, speech, or free association. Indeed, the only thing a broad NDC accomplishes is to grant activists a legal recourse against their ideological opponents. Beware of the disingenuous attempts to manipulate Mesa's best intentions and entrap the city government in an ideological tyranny masked by a puerile dogma of compassion and acceptance. We can have serious conversations about specific issues and difficulties faced by our LGBTQ brothers and sisters to the extent they exist in housing, employment, and public accommodation, but coexistence is a two-way street. A sweeping or convoluted ordinance to broadcast our virtues isn't going to cut it. Katie Byrd states, please do not pass this while I do not believe in discrimination against anyone. This would actually cause more harm than good. It is morally wrong to allow men to use a female bathroom as well as women in a male bathroom. How far are we going to go to rob women, girls, and children from feeling safe while in public? We already have to scare our children by having them constantly looking at strangers like they might be following them to kidnap them for trafficking. Now we have to scare them into not using a public bathroom because of who else might be in there with them. You can say all day long that this will not become an issue of people who will use this as a way to do naughty things to others in the bathroom, but you can't prevent it from happening. There will be cases of harm to our loved ones. The harm is irreparable, causing damages that will last a lifetime to the victim. Lisa Ward states, I'm a concerned resident of Mesa, Arizona. I have read through the new non-discrimination code and listened to the online study session broadcasts. A few things concern me as I reviewed the new ordinance. First, I'm concerned with the lack of information on how the application and enforcement of this ordinance will affect Mesa's diverse array of small businesses, the same small businesses that are already juggling COVID restrictions and limitation. Second, why does the Mesa City Council feel this is the appropriate time to pursue this ordinance? I feel the lack of any widespread discrimination issues in the city of Mesa makes the timing questionable. Are we acting in the best interests of the residents of the city of Mesa? Third, how will religious groups be protected? Who defines where a business owner has to choose between their business and their moral and religious values? Fourth, the whole country is already being torn apart. There are so many whom feel their rights to be heard, valued, and respected are being stripped away. Many still feel that they have no clear rights at all. Regardless of the point of view, this is unmistakably a time of frustration and extreme division. Are we not, are we sure that this ordinance will not cause more division? I believe the people of the city of Mesa should direct our codes and ordinances. I believe that no council members should act on their own desires. Rather, all council members need to be an echo of the voice of those who work and live in this beautiful city. Please delay a vote of the NDO until further data is collected on business impact, legal ramifications, and public opinion can be collected. Rebecca Woolford states, I was born and raised in Mesa and have lived in Mesa for over thirty years. My grandfather helped write the Mesa City Charter, and I love living in Mesa. I am opposed to the non-discrimination ordinance. I believe Mesa is a conservative city. If other Arizona cities have NDOs, let them have their experiment. There is no need for this progressive radical ordinance in Mesa. I fear that there may be unintended consequences if it is passed. The idea of gender identity is very subjective and non-scientific, and as such, it should not be put into the city code. I ask that you put this idea back on the shelf, but if you must vote on it, I urge you to vote no. Jennifer Higvey states that she opposes the law, the NDO. Natalie Palmer states, females may enter the female restroom, males may enter the male restroom. Those who identify themselves as something opposite from the sexual distinction they were given at birth may use a single-use restroom. Or if we are going to add a new distinction above and beyond the two distinctions given by God, male and female, then there will need to be a third bathroom facility provided for those persons. Julia Hall states that she's opposed to equal access to public bathrooms, dressing rooms, and locker rooms. Deanna Eames states, please vote no on change to current non-discrimination laws. If you include gender identity into the new laws, it will allow biological men to go into women's locker rooms and showers and use those facilities. It will allow biological women to enter men's locker rooms and showers and use those facilities. I take my fourteen-year-old son to the gym, and I do not need naked women walking around the men's locker room for my fourteen-year-old son to see because they identify as a man. If a specific business wants to make that a rule, then I can choose to go to a different business with my son. If government forces all businesses, then that limits my choices. The free market can solve these problems better than government can. If there is a demand for coed bathrooms, then I'm sure a good businessman will come up with a solution for it. Susan Elseworth states, as a lifelong citizen of Mesa, I do not support this non-discrimination ordinance. Mesa is welcoming to all that live, visit, and work here. Why are we trying to be like other cities that do not have the same values we do here in our community? This ordinance will divide people rather than building unity. Reagan Turner states, I oppose this change. It will ultimately put both transgender and women at a disadvantage. We are making a large blanket statement law to protect a very small few while putting the majority at a larger risk and ultimately even protecting the few. Please stand strong and keep Mesa the family community has been for so many years. Deanne Williams states, I do not support this change in the ordinance. I feel that it will cause more discrimination than it proposed to protect. It opens a path to more serious changes to our laws and does not protect those with traditional values. There are better ways to handle this if needed. This particular ordinance needs to be stopped. Please remember that the city council is supposed to represent the majority voices that elected them, and from all that I have heard in my community, this is not what we elected you to do. Please oppose this change. We need council members that represent the good of the whole and don't cave to vocal minorities. Please listen to us. Mario Fishbeck states, I did not buy into the notion that repealing chapter fourteen entitled fair housing in its entirety and adding a new chapter fourteen entitled non-discrimination code would be good for the city. We are a gracious city. The ordinance is unnecessary. We offer inclusion to newcomers because out of the goodness of our hearts and not because we are forced. Just because Phoenix, Tucson, Tempe, and Flagstaff have non-discrimination ordinances doesn't mean we should adopt one. We are different from all of them. The key issue to us is that sexual orientation and sexual identity are personal choices, unlike racial characteristics, skin color, hair texture, and shape of eyes, and therefore do not warrant clear-cut protections such as found in the proposed ordinance. The safety and privacy of women and girls would be at risk when the non-discrimination ordinance is mandate businesses to let patrons to choose which restrooms to use. The proposed ordinance does not address the embarrassment and lack of privacy being forced on well over half of the population. Women and children who wish to retain natural and long-held protections which have existed since humans walked the earth, I urge you to vote no on the proposed ordinance. Deanna Carpenter states, she opposed a non-discrimination law. It's a great danger to our community. Please vote no. Yvette Orton states, I'm an eighteen-year-old who just got the right to vote last year. I've been informed that there is a discussion about whether or not to make it legal to let transgender people use the bathroom of their preference. As a woman, I am very uncomfortable with this law because it then lets any man enter a woman's bathroom. They can say they are transgender. Please allow this to go, please allow this to instead go through due process in court instead of taking away my rights to feel safe in a bathroom. Jennifer B. states, I am disappointed and disgusted you would even consider transgender people be able to use locker rooms and restrooms with how they identify themselves. This is dangerous. I, as a woman, shouldn't feel unsafe using the restroom. I'm appalled that the women on this council would consider this. I want you all to think about if you want to put your wife, mother, daughter, granddaughter, nieces, or any female for that matter in this situation. It is always important to stand up for what you believe in, the good morals your parents taught you growing up. This is a moral issue, not a money issue. I really hope the council members that are members of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints thinks and remember what our church stands for when you vote. We were taught to love one another. God doesn't make mistakes. This vote will show what is more important to you if you support this. And those are all of the comment cards for this item, Mayor.
Hey, thank you very much, Ms. Mickelson. Again, that's a clap for Deanne Mickelson. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I appreciate everyone who's participated tonight. I'd also like to say thank you to the many community members, volunteers, and city staff who've worked in some cases for years to bring this ordinance forward. Some, as you've heard, have questioned if Mesa needs a non-discrimination ordinance. Tonight, we've heard the answer to that question from many individuals. In my mind, the answer is clearly yes. It's the right thing to do. It's also the smart thing to do. This ordinance is about protecting civil rights and constitutional rights, including religious freedom. These concepts aren't new. They're fundamental. Non-discrimination laws aren't new. Twenty states and three hundred and twenty cities already have them. Many cities in Arizona have had this ordinance for years without any incident. We're not breaking any new ground here tonight. It's been suggested, as you've heard tonight from several people, that this process may have been rushed. But I have to tell you that quite the contrary is true. We've been discussing an ordinance as a council since 2014 and have continued to meet with interested parties over those years. Many community groups have studied and endorsed this draft of the ordinance, including the Mesa Chamber of Commerce Board, the City of Mesa Economic Development Advisory Board, the Board of Visit Mesa, the City of Mesa Human Relations Advisory Board, and many leaders of our faith groups, churches, and businesses. We've also talked with individuals about their specific concerns. We heard ninety minutes of public comment at our last meeting and over two hours at this meeting, and read hundreds of emails this past month. This process hasn't happened overnight or in a vacuum. We've approached this with careful thought and consideration and incorporated language suggested by the community into the final draft of this ordinance. Also, we've learned from the experience of other cities, the legal questions and enforcement concerns that caused us to take our time on this issue have now been resolved. Many years have been spent discussing this topic in Mesa, maybe too many. This ordinance is moderate and reflects the community input we've received. As we've met with advocacy advocacy groups on both sides of this issue, both have said that they wish this ordinance went farther to support their points of view. To me, that's a sign that this is a mainstream ordinance that hasn't been dictated to us by any outside interest groups. This is Mesa's ordinance, and it demonstrates our city's commitment to respecting and supporting equality and diversity in our city. It also has very specific protections of religion and free speech. This ordinance provides exemptions for churches and religious organizations and for public religious and charter schools and their athletic programs and facilities. We've heard tonight a lot of concern about privacy. I agree, privacy is a reasonable concern. And I want to assure you, as a father of four daughters and the grandfather of four sweet little girls who live in Mesa, I would never put them in danger. Over two million people live in cities in Arizona that have had non-discrimination ordinances in place for more than five years. They haven't experienced the scenarios raised by those critical of this ordinance, nor have those problems been present nationwide. This ordinance is not and will never be a license to engage in inappropriate or criminal conduct in a restroom or any other facility. Everything that was inappropriate or illegal before this ordinance remains inappropriate and illegal. In fact, this ordinance will result in policies that will help avoid those types of conflicts. City government and local businesses can adopt practical policies to protect the legitimate expectations of privacy in public restrooms, changing rooms, locker rooms, and other similar facilities. Such policies do not conflict with this ordinance. In closing, again, I appreciate the thoughtful comments and questions brought forward in good faith throughout this process. I believe all of us are working to protect and advance the best interests of our city. I invite people from all parts of the city to now come together to protect our shared rights. Tonight, we celebrate equality, respect, and fundamental rights. Tonight's not about breaking new ground, but rather tonight's about sharing common ground, the common ground of respect, equality, and non-discrimination. The basic rights we're all entitled to enjoy. It will be my privilege to vote yes to adopt this non-discrimination ordinance for the city of Mesa. Council members, are there comments at this time? Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. I also have a comment statement, but let me begin by saying that I do not accept any form of discrimination. And I expect and believe that every human being should be treated equally without exception. I also believe that Mesa is a community that does not tolerate discrimination. I do not make my decision tonight lightly. Over the past few weeks, I've done extensive research, talking with staff, visiting with many constituents and members of our business community. Last week, I voted in favor of moving this ordinance forward to the public hearing phase because I recognize the level of public interest, as it should be. There are members of our community who want to have their opinions heard and gather as much information as possible. So I wanted to create the opportunity for open dialogue and sharing information between the city and our residents. However, I do not feel there's been ample time to accomplish that goal. However, I do not feel there's been ample time to accomplish that goal. Over the last week, I've received hundreds of emails and phone calls from those on both sides of the issue, and fortunately, there is a lot of misinformation out there as it pertains to this ordinance. I think the most prudent course of action would be to press the pause button and would enable us to organize a committee made up of members from the faith-based business and LGBT community where they can work together to share their ideas and information that can be organized into a recommendation and then be presented to the mayor and council. The council would then be more informed, positioned, to determine the best way to keep Mesa a community that is accepting of all. Employment discrimination based on sexual orientation or gender identity is prohibited in the United States as per the United States Supreme Court. Therefore, having an ordinance that covers what already is in place federally only serves to increase the burden on some of our ten thousand-plus small businesses who have spent the last year fighting survival amongst the pandemic. Every law has a cost to oversee and enforce, and making laws to solve problems that may or may not exist is not good policy. Currently, if complaints are made against private businesses, they are currently forwarded to the Arizona Attorney General's Office. Staff has reported a low volume of calls to date, approximately twenty a year, that two to three result in complaints, and most calls or complaints are related to ADA or Title VI of the Civil Rights Act. Many large employers who call Mesa home already have a non-discrimination policy for their business. I believe employers will choose, will continue to choose Mesa for top reasons like workforce availability, housing, quality of life, and public safety. To restate, there is great public interest in this, as evidenced by the large number of requests to speak this evening. This is indicative of a larger conversation that is needed but has yet to be had. As a city council for the city, as a council member for the city of Mesa, I've been elected to represent the people of our great city. Their collective voices should be heard and taken in consideration before a decision of this magnitude is made. Working in harmony, I believe we can find a way to not place undue burdens on our businesses while also ensuring no person experiences discrimination in our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Vice Mayor Duff?
Thank you. You know, it's been a long night, and I had a long comment as well, but after listening to the supporters tonight, I can't express it better in the limited time we have. So I want to thank everybody, whether I agree or not, for coming forward, but especially those who have supported the ordinance. It brought me to tears in knowing that what has gone wrong in our city and what we need to stand together. And, you know, many people don't think discrimination exists, yet ask anyone that's protected under this ordinance, and they will tell you otherwise. And we can't stand idly by and let this happen. It's time... It's time for our city to step up for absolutely everyone, beyond what's right. We are doing the right thing. It's smart for the success of our city. Diversity is who we are, and we all need to be at the table together. Mesa is a city for everyone equally and successfully. I understand that people want to take more time to go over this, but it's been seven years. We've been working on this for seven years, and we've been trying to satisfy both sides of the issue. We have people on one side and people on another, and we've been through this for seven years. If we don't pass this now, are we going to wait another seven years? What is going to change? The issues that I heard seven years ago are the same that I am hearing today. Nothing has changed. I feel this non-discrimination ordinance strikes a good balance. Yes, it is moderate. Yes, it could be more aggressive. Yes, it could be more lenient, but it is who we are in Mesa in trying to satisfy everybody and standing to protect the rights of all. So I move to approve Item 9A 21-0214, amending the Title VI of the Mesa City Code. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Duff. Councilmember Spilsbury and then Mr. Luna.
I don't have a formal statement prepared, but I do have some things I've been writing down and that I would like to express right now, and I'm already crying. I was told that I was too compassionate for politics, and maybe it's true, but I'm not a politician. I am a mother and a wife and a sister and a friend that loves Mesa and wanted to serve Mesa. I was elected to this position, and I don't take that lightly. I so appreciate those who voted for me and who spent their time and energy to get me into this position. A lot of those people disagree with me right now. I have received one thousand one hundred and seven emails. I've read every single one of those emails, many of them more than once. That's not counting the text messages, phone calls, Facebook Messenger messages, Facebook posts. I've read it all. I feel like I have spent months studying and researching and talking to people on both sides, talking to the attorneys, really thinking and pondering about this issue and how it would affect the people who I love. I've been told that I need to go with the majority of those who voted me in. I represent roughly eighty-six thousand people, and I don't know how I could begin to figure out what the majority wants. I know who some people think they think are the majority, but with a city of five hundred and twenty thousand people, we don't know who the majority is. So at the end of the day, I have to do what I feel is right and what's in my heart. The hate that I have received this week has helped me empathize and just see the smallest glimpse of what the LGBT community has felt like. I don't begin to understand the why of being transgender, but I have listened to their stories. I have felt their pain. They are a vulnerable group in our community, and I want to be part of a community that stands up for them. One of the reasons I wanted to run for council was to be a voice for people who didn't have a voice, whether that is Hispanics, or immigrants, or refugees, or homeless, or mentally ill, or LGBTQ. I want to be a voice for people who don't have a voice. So I am honored to vote yes for this ordinance tonight.
Thank you, Councilmembers Spilsbury and Mr. Luna.
Julie, you're going to be hard to follow. Thank you so much. You know, Mayor, I've been involved in this And, you know, we've been working on this for a long time, since I was put on council of two thousand and thirteen, even when I was on the Human Relations Advisory Board in nineteen ninety-eight, when Mayor Brown appointed me to the board. This is something that was topical that we discussed. You know, this has been, we've been doing this for a long time. We have the Human Relations Advisory Board to work with our community, to talk to the community, and they've recommended this. So I appreciate the Human Relations Advisory Board. Again, we've been working on this since two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, when Debbie Spinner was our city attorney. So it's had, it's a day, and we need to pass it. But I do want to thank city staff, Andrea Alaco, our diversity administrator, and Jackie Garnier, and all those who have worked so hard to get this going. Not until you experience with a sting of discrimination feels like. Do you understand why this ordinance is a part? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, David. Mr. Heredia and then Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I wrote something down to express my feelings as well, and first, you know, I want to thank staff and individuals that have tirelessly worked on this ordinance and folks that have worked on this issue for many, many years here in Mesa. And I also want to say thanks to the many constituents that voiced their opinions throughout this process, you know, both pro and con during these last several weeks. I understand that this ordinance will not stop all discrimination, but, you know, I hope that this is a step that provides an avenue to bring awareness and collaboration within our community, upholding all members that are part of the community. We will continue to work towards achieving equality in all its forms, knowing that progress is sometimes a slow-moving process and one that we all need to work on this together relentlessly. You know, I feel that our goal is to build a better city. Decisions like today are an important step forward as we continue to build that better city, but it's not the end of the story. To truly build, I think, a better city, we need everyone's help. I ask our community to apply the golden rule that many folks have commented in these comments, "Treat thy neighbor as thyself." We all want to be treated with respect. We need to value our members of our community, even those that might disagree with. For when I think we all are equal and valued, we will have built a better city. So I think the important step that we're taking today is we're stating that Mesa, Arizona, though not perfect, supports equal rights for all right now, and that we will not tolerate discrimination in our city, and that we will continue moving the needle forward in progress. So with that, I would, I'm going to vote yes on this ordinance, and hopefully, we can continue working, making this the best place to live, work, and play here in this state and this country.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a statement that I'd like to read. So let me start by saying that as a military veteran, I would like to thank that I served and fought to ensure freedom for all Americans, freedom to assemble, freedom of speech, freedom of religion, freedom of inclusion, and freedom of equality. But I also fought to ensure we remain a representative democracy, a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. I'm glad that the two thousand and fourteen diversity report has come up because that was part of my statement. Let me read for you the summary of the two thousand and fourteen Inclusion and Diversity Report that was completed by the Human Relations Advisory Board, and this can be found on pages twenty-one and twenty-two. It says, quote, "As stated in the report, Mesa Opinion Survey, Satisfaction with Life in Mesa and Perceptions of Discrimination and Tolerance, the research produced from this report finds that overall Mesa receives positive reviews from its residents. While complaints certainly exist, there does not appear to be blanketed patterns of bias or discrimination in Mesa. Although that is not to deny that some residents have experienced legitimate problems, I'd rather identify this area to be countered effectively in order to promote a safer, livable city. While the reported experiences do not appear to have significantly lowered opinions of Mesa, there remains a need for Mesa to continue efforts to educate its citizenry and to find new ways to embrace its diversity while also reducing incidence of bias and discrimination." End quote. There is nothing in that summary that asks or mandates the city of Mesa to enact such an ill-conceived ordinance, such as what we are voting on tonight. I continue to feel that an ordinance does not need. I also feel that discrimination is a horrible action and should not be tolerated in any society. I am sympathetic to those in the LGBTQ community that feel that there may be discrimination in our community, and I'm supportive of doing all we can to educate our community to eliminate any and all types of discrimination. While I have reservations about the need for a proposed ordinance, I am open to compromise. It strikes the balance between the need to protect religious liberties and organizations while also prohibiting discrimination. The SCOTUS ruling in June of two thousand and twenty found that the word sex in the Civil Rights Act was broad enough to encapsulate not only sexual orientation but gender identity as well. Therefore, I once again point out that we can eliminate both employment and housing provisions from the draft NDO since it would be a violation of both the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four as well as HUD and a violation of federal law. So that leaves only the public accommodations to consider in what I believe is the most contentious and divisive provision of the ordinance. As a representative democracy, we should ensure we are listening to our constituents and either shelve this ordinance or slow the process and include input from our community, our businesses, and our faith-based organizations to ensure everyone's right to protect it. Until that happens, I will continue to be a no vote on what myself and many others feel is bad legislation. Therefore, I would make a motion that we follow Councilmember Freeman's request and form a task force to relook at this ordinance and include many of our community members and other organizations and faith-based community to help write an ordinance that fits Mesa. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think that's not on our agenda right now, and we do have a motion from Ms. Duff to approve the item that's on our agenda. Mr. Luna, I see your hand up.
Yeah, Mayor, I was going to second Vice Mayor Duff's motion.
Thank you very much. So we do have a motion and a second on the item that is on our agenda for approval. Is there any additional discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Freeman, how do you vote?
Nay.
Thank you. Councilmember Spilsbury?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Heredia?
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Duff?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson?
May.
Thank you. I vote yes. That motion passes five to two. The next item, and again, thank you so much for everyone who has been so patient with us. This was a long meeting, and I appreciate the good faith that was demonstrated by everybody that participated in this discussion tonight. We do have one last item on our agenda. That's items from citizens present. Ms. Mickelson, do we have any requests to speak?
We have one speaker, Mayor Deborah Marrero, and she is on the phone.
Thank you. Ms. Marrero, please begin. You have three minutes. Ms. Marrero, you might need to unmute your phone.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Yes, we hear you. Please go ahead. You have three minutes.
All right. So I'm addressing the noise ordinance that we have in six twelve two. It's all jumbled up, and it's not addressing what I went through, and I sent you, I believe I sent some paperwork about the noise that I had been subjected to, and it was continuous longer than fifteen minutes. It would start at seven AM till about nine thirty at night, and all the officer could see is that Mesa says that six to ten that they could have this. Now, I had to put my granddaughters to bed at eight o'clock, so I had the noise on my computer so that you could see how loud it was that I was experiencing in my home and not having peaceful peace to my home. But I think that six twelve two should be revised like six twelve three is where it's more in number, in letter E on the six twelve three E is more stipulated of what noise should be, or, I mean, it just needs to be written out differently. It's all jumbled together, and, like I said, when the officer came over, Officer Horn, all he could see is that city noise was until ten PM, and I had to listen to this pounding and standing and everything till nine thirty at night from seven in the morning, and my girls had to sit here with headphones on to listen to TV. This was ridiculous.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comment. Unfortunately, because that's not on our agenda, we can't engage in any dialogue with you about it, but we encourage you to keep working with city staff and appreciate you uh... But we encourage you to keep working with city staff and appreciate you commenting tonight. That concludes the items on our agenda. Council, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Luna. Please unmute your microphones. All in favor of adjourning this meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned.